All set? Yeah. Good evening, everyone. It's now 6:30, and I would like to call our regular November Planning Commission meeting to order. Before I proceed, I want to take a minute to go over our meeting protocols. So, the South Pasadena Planning Commission meeting for November 9th, 2021 will be conducted in an in-person hybrid meeting from the council chambers, Amity O. Dick Richards Jr., Council Chambers, located at 1424 Mission Street in South Pasadena, and it will also be digitally available through Zoom. Please be advised that pursuant to executive orders and to ensure the health and safety of the public, staff, and the planning commission, the council chambers will be open to the public for the meeting, and members of the public may attend and/or participate in the in-person meeting. And everyone who is here in person is kindly reminded to follow the Los Angeles County's Public Health, as well as CDC regulations and guidelines that are in place, may be posted, which is why we all have masks on. So with that, I will take roll call. The staff will note that following our presence, Commissioner Barthikor, Commissioner Braun, Commissioner Dahl, Commissioner Padilla, and myself. But it's been a long time since we've had a full house here. Our council liaison, Mayor Mahmoud, our city attorney, Andrew Jared, as well as the community development director, Angelica Presto-Lupo, the deputy community development director, Margaret Lynn, and the long-range planning principal management analyst, Elizabeth Barle, don't remember her title being that long, and contract planner Jeff Hamilton are also present. So we're going to do the pledge of allegiance, so if you're able, please rise. Place your hand over your heart and again, let the lead to apply. So, we, next item is approval of the agenda. So commissioners for staff, do we have any requests to additions or revisions or reorganization of the agenda? Seeing none? Do a quick vote of the commission to proceed as the gen, the approval of the agenda is submitted. I'll call roll call, so. Danit. Sorry, Vice Chair Padilla.
Aye.
Commissioner Dahl.
Aye.
Commissioner Barthikor. Thank you. And then, moving forward, I'm going to ask the commissioners speak one by one. If you want to speak at a different time, feel free to raise your hand and be called on. With that, we'll move on to disclosure of site visits and ex parte contacts. So, I'll, I'll just go again, my left to right, the audience is right to left, Commissioner Braun.
Yeah, I ju, I drove by the projects.
Commissioner Padilla.
I went by the Indiana Terrace site.
Commissioner Dahl.
Nothing to disclose.
Commissioner Barthikor.
Nothing to disclose.
And I also have nothing to disclose. So, our first item is a continued hearing, 19, or 619 Indiana Terrace, which is project number 2218 HDP, DRX, and TRP, which means we're looking at a hillside development permit, design review, variance, as well as a tree removal permit to allow the construction of a 4,234 square foot, multi-level, single-family home with a attached garage. So, it looks like we have a staff presentation.
Chair members of the commission. Okay. As mentioned, this project involves applications for hillside development permit, design review, variances, tree removal permit. Project is eligible under SEQA as a categorical exemption. This is an aerial view of the site, shows project site highlighted in green with surrounding properties. The site was, has been previously sort of graded and, and there was temporary improvements or initial improvements for a different project, a different house, but those, that was abandoned. Only thing left on, remains of that improvement of the site is a retaining wall towards the south side of the site. This is a view of the site from the street, shows neighboring house, a neighboring house to the right, and then the driveway for another house to the left, some existing trees and shrubs on the park. This is the proposed site plan for the property with an inset view of a rendering of what the house and garage would look like after construction. On the site plan, you can see the, a small portion of the cul-de-sac bulb that that constitutes the front property line, shows the driveway coming into the site, and then making a 90-degree turn that provides some guest parking on the driveway, and access to the two-car garage. To the south of the parking area is the footprint of the house, and south of that, you can see the existing retaining wall, and then the undeveloped portion of the property on the very furthest portion of the south part of the site. This is a rendering perspective view of the proposed project, that shows the parking area, the garage, habitable space above the garage, and then above the parking area, and then the retaining wall that's the subject of one of the variances behind the parking area, behind the stairs that provide access to the habitable space of the house. This is an elevation view of the front of the house, again, shows the parking area, the garage, inhabitable portions of the house and their construction sort of style, which is contemporary. You can see that the retaining wall, which is the subject of one of the variances, rises behind the parking area, which is proposed to be finished with a stone veneer. The house is going to be finished in a variety of materials, including hardy plank in the, which is the yellow portion of the walls, and then stucco on other portions of the walls. There'll be open metal railings and then glass railings along the stairs providing access from the parking area up to the habitable space. This is the view, east view, the side view, which shows the sort of returns portion of the retaining wall that forms a foundation of the house. As I mentioned, this will be covered in stone veneer. This retaining wall exceeds the allowed height under the zoning, which is a maximum of six feet. The maximum height of this retaining wall is 12. The red lines on the property show the natural grade of the, of the site on the lower red line, and then upper red line shows the allowed height based on the natural grade. This is the west elevation of the house, the opposite side, which shows portion of the garage wall, and then the house walls. This is the rear elevation towards the south part of the site, which shows some of the stucco walls, the windows, and the hardy plank finishes on the upper level. One of the variances is a request to reduce the percentage of the site that would be returned to natural state and vegetation. In the image at the top of the slide, you can see in light blue, the area of the site that is not proposed to be improved or graded. This represents about 25% of the lot. The requirement under the code is that 54% of the lot be returned to its natural state. Given the need for access to the site and a reasonable house size, it seems unlikely that there's a way to fit a reasonable house into the property and meet the natural grading retire, requirement. So staff thinks that this is a reasonable request for this variance. Should point out too, that on the retaining wall, unless substantially more grading was performed, and the house was lowered into the hill, significant retaining walls would be required to form the foundation of the house. For that reason, and in part also the way that the retaining walls are treated with the stone veneer, this also seems like a reasonable proposal to for this variance. Staff believes that you can make the findings, that the project is consistent with the design guidelines, the hillside design standards, and the variance findings, and we recommend approval of the project with the requested variances, subject to the conditions of approval. Your options before you are to approve the project with the conditions as proposed, or with modifications that you may prefer. You may identify other issues or concerns with the project and then provide the applicant with direction on how they might proceed on if you would choose to continue the item, or you may choose to deny the project. That completes my presentation. Do you have any questions?
So why don't we just go in the same order? So Commissioner Braun.
I don't have questions at this time.
Commissioner Padilla.
I have one question. I noticed in the packet, there was a reference on one of the drawings to a J-ADU, a junior ADU. Was that just remnant text because it's not mentioned in the staff report or the, the body of the drawings? I just thought it was worth double checking.
Unfortunately, the applicant nor the architect are here. I might refer some of that to them. I'm not aware of a proposal on this project for a ADU or a junior ADU. Probably is remnant language from another.
It shows on figure four of this.
On fig, of the PowerPoint?
On the staff report.
I think it's page.
Figure four?
Packet page 1-5.
Oh, that's just, yes, that's just a remnant.
Okay, okay. I just thought it was worth double checking. Okay, thank you. That was my last question.
Commissioner Dahl.
The, the Arborist report in the packet is over two years old. I was wondering if you had gone to the site to see if there were any significant changes to the trees besides two years of growing.
I have not personally visited the site.
Okay. And Arborist report has a lot of recommendations for protecting the trees during construction and before construction, and even I think after construction. And the staff report says that those are incorporated by reference in the conditions. Can you show me where those were? Because I couldn't find it.
Condition P8 states that the project shall comply with all recommendations, guidelines, and mitigations listed in the Arborist report dated August 27, 2019.
You think we could attach the Arborist report, or at least those conditions, to the conditions so that staff in the future don't have to go somehow and find this old Arborist report? I don't know. This is a question for city attorney or staff.
You, you could direct staff to, if you choose to move forward with the project and want to approve it, you could direct staff that project is approved with conditions as amended by recommendation of the council to incorporate all the conditions from the Arborist report. That would be the simplest way probably to accomplish what you're saying.
And. I, I think that's all the questions I have. That's all, thank you.
I have the same question for the junior ADU, and I understand the applicant is not here. I was actually going to ask him if you're interested in adding a junior ADU to the project, and we're, we're open to that. The other question I had was related to the trees. I just wanted to sort of reconcile what was there in the staff report, the application packet, and the Arborist report, just so I understand.
Okay.
There are nine trees being removed, out of which four are protected?
So, the Arborist report on page 11 lists the matrix of all the trees on the site. It's a little bit of a misnomer in that many of the plants listed are not trees, they're shrubs. Oleander is a shrub, and Carolina cherry typically is a shrub. So, when I went through this, my, I thought I counted nine actual trees, as opposed to shrubs. The.
There's a matrix of protected trees to be removed, which is sort of crossed off with a, and.
Right.
Those, I was trying, are those removed, or are there, are those tables an applicable?
This is, again, from the Arborist report. It says protected trees to be removed, the Mexican elderberry, laurel sumac, Mexican elderberry, and incense cedar. Again, I don't consider the laurel sumac a tree, but that's the way it's listed on the Arborist report.
Okay, so, so you've actually taken your judgment in the staff report, and I only included the nine, what you'd consider as trees. Right?
Yes.
Okay. Just so I understand, I was, I was just counting, I'm not an Arborist.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I noted the J-ADU too. Do you think it was leftover? The question I had was, you said in the, in your presentation of staff report that there was a preliminary geotechnical report provided?
I believe that was submitted and, and provided to the Public Works Department for their review. I don't have it in front of me.
Okay, yeah, it wasn't part of the packet either. Just when we're doing variances, 12-foot-high retaining walls, I'd like to glance at it, but I noticed the conditions, so I think we'll be okay. Any, any further questions? So, do we have a present, do we, do we have a presentation from the applicant, or?
I haven't received anything as of the time of the meeting.
Okay. So seeing no presentation from the applicant, do we have any public comment? Or do we have?
Are you here to speak on this item? Okay, you can approach the podium and introduce yourself to the commission.
My name is Hussein Amiri. I live at 617 Indiana Terrace, which is the west of this property, and the, that, the proposed, basically. What we found in the map here that is the balconies and the large windows, that if you look at to the west side of the building, which faces our house, there are many large windows and balconies, and it's quite intrusive. There is basically taken away our privacy. We have, you know, two-story house there, and the, the first level has, you know, windows that faces to the 619, but in the second floor, we have small windows, and we thought that, you know, that is something that is expected, that the balconies be facing towards the street, not, you know, to the neighbor's house. And we don't exactly know what the level of that property is going to be, especially if it's a little bit higher, is going to completely take away, you know, our privacy. And, and not knowing, you know, what sort of neighbor would be coming, depending on whether they are people that quiet, or are people that are going to be partying all the time, is going to be taking away the peacefulness of the place as well.
Any further?
These are the main, you know, basically comments that we have, is, and the balconies mainly, and large windows, and especially that the balcony on the garage, because the garage is basically moved further towards our house, that if somebody, you know, if they are ascending the balcony, it was just, is, is just across our.
30 seconds.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any further public comment on this item?
Okay. Let me check in Zoom. Is there anyone who is watching on Zoom that would like to speak on this item? Please raise your hand. No hands are right, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. And then, do, do we, sorry, we got some letters late. Did we receive any written comment on this item? Do we know? Written, any written comment? But we got an email with some letters, and I didn't have time to read them. Any of them pertain to this item?
No, Mr. Chair.
There, there was a letter in tonight's packet, and I think there was two letters in last month's packet on this item.
So I will close a public comment on this item. Would you also like to give a public comment? You may. Do you fill out a card? There's a little card. Do they fill out a public comment card?
Yes. Okay, after speaking, if you could fill out a public comment card, it's on the entrance when you walk in, there's a table there. Just fill that out. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Mary. I'm Amiri. I, I'm living in 617 Indiana Terrace as well. I actually wanted to add a few more things that you already mentioned. There are 14 basically opening on the west side, on our side, proposed side, basically comparing to the, the east side, that there are only six or seven opening. There are two balconies, there are on the front and back of the house, including another one that, you know, on top of the garage, that the garage is coming about further off the first floor, and there are going to be overlooking on our backyard. The, there are, there's the yellow, I, I think that the wall or there is a, it seems that it doesn't have any covering on that. I believe that it's going to be patio, that, that also, that it has basically the party or something happening there, because that side is a, near the hillside, is easily can be echoed, and basically the, everything can be heard pretty loudly in that area, and especially our backyard, also the master, living room, dining room, that, that we have in that side. That's basically, it's going to decrease the value of our property in addition to the privacy that is going to be, basically, that you're going to lose because of the, all the windows and all the large opening and the patios that we are having. Thank you so much.
May I ask you a quick question before you leave? If you had an opportunity to discuss this with the applicant, if they reached out to you as a neighbor?
No, we did not have any opportunities.
Okay, thank you. Don't forget to fill out the. Any further? With that, I will close public comment, and I will open it up for commissioner comments and discussion. I'll, I'll shake it up and go the opposite direction this time, so we'll start with Commissioner Barthikor.
You know, I, I had some questions regarding the natural state, which is a topic that keeps coming up more and more, and as the available developable sites are becoming more and more challenging, it has become fairly subjective on our part to sort of look at the data and approve, which I appreciate staff's recommendations. However, I mean, I think maybe it is a little bit outside of the realm of this particular project. It's, it's sort of a little bit difficult to judge the thresholds by which we are kind of determining whether it is appropriate to have, you know, 26% or 45% or, or whatever it may be in terms of a concession that we're providing for the site. So, I, I don't see, I mean, I, I agree with a lot of the justification provided in the staff report, but I feel still that I'm making sort of an arbitrary decision, or in most cases that are, you know, hillside developments that are coming to us. And it's not unusual, because the remaining sites that are being developed are challenging and, and will have continuous issues related to this particular requirement. So, I mean, I don't think it's a question per se, but it's a bit of a comment, which makes it harder on us, I think. That's, that's sort of my overarching comment.
That's fine. Anything else?
We received a comment letter, I think, in our October packet, asking about hours of, of construction, and I was wondering, as a general rule, can the, can the commission have more strict hours of construction than the zoning code? Is that something we can do in a hillside permit? Yes, I'm asking staff or city attorney? So can we, can we adopt, could we say, for example, no construction on Sundays, or no construction on Saturdays, or does it hap, are we required to be the same as the code?
I would absolutely defer to the city attorney on that.
You're required, unless you can find a specific finding that's associated with something presented in the evidence, you're confined to what the code says.
Okay. We also received a comment letter, I think, today about grading and utility lines along the property line, and removal of a retaining wall. Does staff recommend any additional conditions after reading that comment?
I'm sorry, I haven't seen the comment letter. It wasn't, it wasn't made available to me. I will say that according to the proposal, they weren't, they weren't proposing to remove any existing retaining walls on the property. The one existing retaining wall that I'm aware of is towards the south, and the new development is all north of that. They're, they're going to rely on that existing retaining wall essentially. If there are existing, I will say generally, that if there are existing utility lines on the property. on the property.
This letter is saying that they're very close to the property line, but perhaps on the neighbor's property. So they're just concerned about the impact of, you know, construction on their their utility lines.
Typically, this is managed by the building and safety department very carefully during the construction process. This happens all the time where there are either electrical lines, sewer lines, or whatever, water lines on adjacent properties that could potentially be impacted and that that the proposal, the project will have to propose construction techniques to make sure that doesn't happen. And then that will be overseen by the city to make sure that no disruption occurs.
Okay. And then I think the resolution has some typos in it. At the beginning of the resolution, it refers to a different applicant name and different project number in the first whereas that just needs to be.
Yes, that is indeed a typo.
If the applicant was here, I would ask them if they would be interested in voluntarily reducing their hours of construction. I think we had something similar last at our last meeting, but they're not here to ask that. So I guess those are all my comments.
Vice Chair.
My sense of looking at the package is that the site obviously is pretty challenging. And I appreciate that the development the applicant proposed and their architect was mostly focused on the plateau of the site, you know, midway up and that the trees were protected. In many cases, at least the ones that were that were deemed critical or had integrity still and the replacements are going to be planted. You know, in a general sense, the massing is handled with smaller forms. There's some variety. At times it seemed random, but it feels like it's in the range of what the commission's been reviewing with some of the challenging hillside sites. So and I'm glad Commissioner Dahl raised the utility comment because I think that's that's a pretty standard concern of neighbors where a major new construction project is going up. So usually they do do kind of dig alert and there's there's definitely review and identification of utilities, especially when it comes to neighboring properties. This may seem like a small issue and and I think it's one that may be more global, but I don't think the commission can be extra strict on this particular project. We've been approving it to be fair. On other ones are how many glass railings we're seeing in projects. Yes, it's contemporary. Yes, it's very architectural. My concern personally is bird injury and bird fatality, which for those of us that live in the hills of South Pasadena, there's a real issue in spring. We have a lot of glass in our house and it's frightening. I have to put Post-its on windows and things. So there's a lot of great products are available today, whether you frit the glass, treat it. It can be a very discreet way from a design point of view, or you can add things later like UV coating. So I kind of make that as a broad appeal to anybody listening or proposing hillside contemporary houses that any use of glass railings, just be kind of cognizant of the animals out there. The privacy concern and the comments that were raised by those that spoke this evening, I think, should be taken to heart by the applicant. It'll be good to kind of talk more as a group once all of us had a chance to speak. It does look like from the plans and honestly, these are things that the applicant or their architect should really help address and answer. But it does look like many of the uses are bedrooms would tend to be quieter with the exception of the room that's called an entertain room. That I would put a big question mark. What what does that mean exactly? The terrace is off of that. Could they consider stepping the terrace over the garage back because there's already a 10-foot step back? But if you if you adjusted the usable space on the terrace back further, there'd be even more of a space and maybe the size of it is reduced. I think they're reasonable questions. They do. It does appear they fall within, you know, the current guidelines in terms of what's proposed. But I think it's a they're reasonable concerns for neighbors to raise. I just think it's I can ideally they'd be answered by the applicant or their architect. And those were my main comments. Thank you.
Commissioner.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I'm using my phone because I don't have my hard copies with me. So I'm looking at the agenda and materials through my phone. But I I originally looked at it and thought, okay, there's a lot of really good considerations that the applicant, the architect made. Again, I agree, like the we're excited and the plateau and what they're trying to do. But I have to say, in really looking at the whole thing, kind of taking a step back, you know, it's a 4,200 square foot house. It's a pretty big house. I don't know if you could do a smaller house and therefore kind of meet the more of the vegetation percentage. I get that the floor area ratio is complies with that, but I think there's a reason for this, the the natural state requirement. So to have us keep waiving it, it almost is like, well, we don't even care anymore. You know, like, it's just about floor area ratio or whatever that is. So I'm in this case, it's, you know, supposed to be fifty-four percent and they're going to twenty-five percent. I mean, that's a pretty big very pretty big difference. So I'm wondering if there could be some way to sort of meet that requirement or maybe not twenty-five percent, but maybe it's thirty-five percent. And maybe you have to cut down some square footage, but that's the reason for these limitations to exist, right? So that's a little concerning on this one. And I think a glaring at a 12-foot retaining wall, that seems to be pretty big. I just think that I I'm not sure. Those are two pretty big variances. And I'm sort of disappointed that the applicant had not reached out to neighbors. I think that's disappointing. I think those are valid concerns as to window placement and privacy. If I was going to move in there, I'd certainly want to talk to my neighbors. So I have some concerns.
So I tend to agree with the comments by my fellow commissioners. You know, I think the the privacy issue is a legitimate issue and needs to be carefully thought about. We do have findings to make that really both, you know, talk about, you know, the enjoyment of neighboring developments, the effects on neighboring developments. And I always, you know, have concerns about that, particularly in this instance where there are some big areas and it would be good to at least be able to engage in a broader dialogue. And I were, yeah, I also worry about a 12-foot retaining wall. Usually we get the geotech reports so we can at least look through them and look at the recommendations by the engineer. So I I have my concerns. I'm not quite as concerned about the open space yet. I do think it's, you know, I don't think this is an uncharacteristically large proposal for a single-family residence. And it's a challenging site and we're limited. We don't have a ton of available property for development now. But I do think that we should continue to monitor the variance that I So those are my initial thoughts. I'm wondering if we if we feel like we could move forward with an approval at this time.
I can add a comment that that I forgot to mention and maybe it relates to Commissioner Braun's comment about could it be reduced is one thought is there is a pretty large paved driveway and guest parking area. I think there's parking for five cars on site, which is pretty amazing. That's total count that includes the garage spaces, which means there's at least three guest stalls shown, maybe more, depending on tandem and how you can squeeze your small cars in these days. And my reaction to that is that it seemed rather high. The street is very narrow. It's really an kind of an older, as you know, part of the city. It's very narrow street, but it's it made me real it made me wonder with the number of bedrooms and the entertainment room with the with the leftover JADU note, the entertaining room is a second kitchen. So what's interesting to me is it looks ambiguous, but it also sure looks like there's an intention to have an ADU. I think technically right now with hillside sites, there's a parking space is not required, but it's a lot of onsite parking. So there's definitely could be strategies that could be employed by the applicant and their architect to look at less paved area, maybe got lose a car to visitor parking. You can definitely tandem on the driveway, it looks like as I look at the site plan. So there may be some things that could be done to make it, you know, kind of make it a little more compatible and and not lose so much of the natural state and address neighbors' issues who've been thoughtful about coming and making their comments pretty apparent. So I just wanted to add.
Right. This application suffers from a major pet peeve of mine, which is not showing the new development in relation to the existing buildings. Kind of drives me crazy. The city of neighborhoods and it's pre-built out. There is this, there is the takes the project in isolation. It doesn't tie it to its neighbors, which makes it that much harder to evaluate windows and views. Those affect the Yeah, but that doesn't really say kind of the back deck and how things go together. First. Any further?
I would also encourage the applicant to really consider a JADU since it was on the top.
They may. Maybe.
I think I think we've all raised enough questions that we want to get some clarification from the applicant that I don't think I can make a recommendation without hearing from the applicant and getting their response to some of our questions. I agree with Commissioner Dahl as well.
So I let me I'll go ahead. I'll go ahead and make a motion that we continue this application and that we need additional information regarding the large retaining walls, the effect kind of the orientation of the windows in relation to the neighboring houses. Missing anything or another?
I think you're the windows and the relationship of the neighboring structures to them.
Yeah.
Consideration of the comments raised with privacy, the terrace and of the room called entertaining room, things that might generate noise that seem like they were the nature of a concern of the one of the existing neighbors.
Yeah.
And maybe some clarification on the JADU.
Yeah, just confirmation.
Yeah.
That's I didn't think that's a ministerial rule that's coming through, but at least worth not having a black bull. So I mean, oh, so I was in the middle of a motion. So I was the I think we I think so continue and and the clarification on the items that were mentioned.
And I I don't know if we I don't necessarily want to put this in the the in the resolute or the motion, but do we want to have some kind of maybe suggestion? Or I don't know if you want to make it part of the motion. I do think that some contact with the neighbors.
Yeah, why don't we?
Is not is like really
Finish the motion and then
Okay.
We can discuss.
Okay.
So do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, so discussion. So you want you want you want some type of outreach to the
Well, I don't know. I think I don't know. I don't remember who the I mean, I don't know who the applicant is, but I think outreach to neighbors is really important when you're coming into a pre-built out neighborhood.
I agree.
And I think that I'm not sure. It's not required that they're here, but I'm it would have been nice if the applicant or the architect were here so that we could ask some of these questions.
Agreed.
I agree. I mean, it's multiple variances and the commission and the public and neighbors and community are here to talk about the project. So it seems like a vital part of the process. I agree with Commissioner Brown.
Did the motion mention anything about the 12-foot retaining wall and okay, sorry.
Why you started with?
Okay, sorry. I missed that. Thank you.
So we have a motion, a second. I was going to call a roll and listen if anybody has any friendly amendments. Okay, Commissioner Bartholomew.
Aye.
Commissioner Dahl.
Aye.
Vice Chair Padiya.
Aye.
Commissioner Braun.
Aye.
And I am aye as well. So we'll continue this.
I'm sorry. Do we need to continue it to a specific date in order for it not to be re-enotised?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, so we'll continue it to our next regularly regularly scheduled meeting, which is in December.
Is that December seven?
I believe the commission meets regular on the second Tuesday of each month. So that would be December fourteenth then.
Okay, so our next regularly scheduled meeting, December fourteenth. Thank you. Then for the item number two, we have a recommendation from staff that we continue the item. Mine reads November fifteenth. Now we have to continue it. The staff, they're giving, you want to continue this to the next? There's a typo on there. Oh, do we? Are we doing it at special meeting? Sorry.
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you. I'll I'll go ahead and make a motion that we continue this to our special meeting November.
I'll second that motion.
Any discussion? None. Do a quick roll. The Commissioner Bartholomew.
Aye.
Dahl.
Aye.
Vice Chair Padiya.
Aye.
Commissioner Braun.
Aye.
Aye as well. So we'll continue fifteen oh two Indiana to our November fifteenth meeting. So we're moving on to the discussion portion of our agenda. And item number three is the release of our 2021 to 2029 public review draft general plan housing element. Everyone's waited, waited for it.
Elizabeth. I was just gonna say, I I don't think your mic's on.
Oh. Is that better? You don't want me to repeat that, though. Okay. Well, good evening again. So here, oops, unless the clicker doesn't work. I've been told this is temperamental. Okay, so maybe it's not on. Okay. Oh, now it's working. Okay, great. So here's a quick review of where we are now in the process, reviewing the first public review draft of the housing element. As you'll see here, we will soon be releasing the Program Environmental Impact Report, or the P E I R, together with the revised draft general plan update and the draft downtown specific plan. The P E I R will analyze all three documents in compliance with California Environmental Quality Act, or CEQA, and will be available for comments as required by CEQA for 45 days. A bit more about how this process comes together will be on the next slide. So this slide does not show the entire project timeline, which we reviewed with you at a presentation of six months ago on May 26, which went back to the very first general plan community meetings in 2016 and 2017, and place works entrance into the general plan process in 2019, and then coming onboard as our housing element consultants in 2020. Virtual community meetings were held in summer of 2020 for the housing element. And since then, there have been multiple discussions at planning commission about developing the housing element sites inventory and programs, housing issues, ordinances that directly impact the city's housing development and are reflected in the housing element. So also during this period, the general plan update and the downtown specific plan, or D T S P, have been developing concurrently in order to ensure that the policies that the policies in those documents support rezoning for sufficient housing opportunities consistent with that housing element. All right. So the these projects, the general plan projects, the housing element, all have dedicated city webpages. And throughout this time, members of the public could and have provided input. Previous presentations to you have presented more detail, but in response to a public comment received, I just wanted to remind the commission and the community that the housing element has included outreach and transparency throughout a process that has been spanning about a year and a half. The issues at stake for housing have been discussed at multiple public meetings. The strategy for H C D's input was discussed with you as well, and many adjustments were made based on your input, public comments, and H C D's informal review of the strategy. We're now focused on ensuring that the community is aware that the draft housing element is out for comment. There have been emails, newspaper ads, press release, and item last Wednesday at the council to confirm the process moving forward. Community meeting, and of course, this is our second meeting with you. So continuing on with that process tonight is about hearing your thoughts as we wait for H C D to review and send their comments back to us so that we may revise and release the next draft to move the process forward, which will bring us then to our next slide. So last Wednesday, the council approved staff's recommendation to revise the process for the housing element pursuant to the recent passage of A B 1398. Staff provided information to council about how A B 1398 now removes any possibility of being able to comply with the terms of the 120-day extension period for housing elements, which ends on February 11 of 2022. Accordingly, as a result of A B 1398, the city will be required to complete the rezoning of sites for residential development in compliance with the RENA and the housing element by October 15 of 2022. This is a very tough state mandate. It will be very difficult for many SCAG jurisdictions to comply with. And as I go through this new schedule here, you will see that South Pasadena actually is fortunately in a position to comply with that deadline because of the fact that staff with the commission's guidance took an approach over a year ago to co-develop the general plan and the downtown specific plan to ensure consistency with the housing element with appropriate combined environmental review. So this will facilitate the rezoning process and will actually allow it all to be completed within the next 11 months. So based on the new schedule, the commission's recommendation to adopt the housing element, as you'll see here, will now be scheduled to happen after H C D's second 60-day review period, which should generate a letter of conditional approval in March of next year. This will support the adoption of a final draft in April or May that complies with their letter and will have a much higher certainty of certification. So although the schedule sets the adoption hearings two months later than the original schedule, the overall process will actually be completed earlier because there will only be one set of adoption hearings instead of the two previously envisioned. So as you see on the schedule, the new schedule also changes the timing of the housing element in relation to the general plan and the D T S P schedule. The general plan and D T S P are now anticipated to be re-released and out for public public review soon in the in this winter of 2021, as you see. And in in earlier discussions with the commission, the plan was to adopt the housing element first and then to begin adoption hearings for the general plan and D T S P. However, now there will be more time, ample time for the community to provide comments on the general plan and D T S P while H C D is reviewing the housing element for the second run and that we send them in January. So depending on the community's input into the process, it may be possible to adopt the general plan update, the D T S P and the housing element, which of course is a component of the general plan, together at one hearing if this turns out to time well and be advantageous. Once all these general plan elements have been adopted, the ordinance to rezone for consistency can be brought forward for hearing as well. And this can all be accommodated accomplished, as I said, prior to October 15, 2022, so that the city will remain in compliance with state law and, very importantly, avoid further consequences that could potentially negatively affect the city's ability to control the development process. And that, in the end, is our our bottom line with this whole project. So thank you for indulging a little more detail on the process, but I really did want to make sure that that was clear and and explained to you all. So I will now turn the clicker here over to Amy to talk about the RENA and some other background.
Thank you, Liz. Good evening, Chair, members of the commission. It is nice to be here in person. So we do want to kind of go through how we got to where we are now. And if you want to get into more detail, we are happy to do that during the discussion. So your regional housing needs allocation or assessment number is what has been handed down from the state to SCAG to the city to plan for in your housing element. In the SCAG region, there are about 1.3 million units that are being planned for right now by the cities and counties. As Liz mentioned, this process is aligning with your general plan and downtown specific plan process. So everything needs to make sense between all of the documents and including your land use map. So that's been a big part of this process. This much higher number that you've received this time for your housing element, it has driven the process. It was a significant increase, as you all know. So that is why we are where we are in terms of aligning all of the documents and making sure that we have a plan to meet the RENA going forward. The city did participate in the appeal process with SCAG. That is something that 41 jurisdictions submitted, and that was in the fall of 2020. Very few of the appeals were successful. The city did form a committee and put together an argument based on the local context. It was denied, and the actual final RENA number did end up at 2067, which was five additional units based on another appeal that was granted. So that final RENA was adopted by SCAG in March 2021. So want to talk a little bit about the inventory of sites and the approach to meeting the RENA. We first came before your commission in July of 2020 with the first pass at addressing these numbers. And it was clear at that point that there are not enough sites zoned for residential currently in the city to address that number. So we took a look at ways to meet the RENA. We looked at the option of projecting accessory dwelling units as part of that approach. And, you know, ultimately, this is a very built-out city. So we took a really hard look at sites that are not vacant but have some potential for redevelopment with housing or with housing as part of the project. And just to keep in mind that, you know, the those sites for what's called the lower income piece of the RENA do need to allow for 30 dwelling units to the acre. And that's something that is proposed to happen as part of the rezoning effort. The state considers sites that are greater than a half an acre or less than 10 acres kind of the sweet spot for what's suitable for that type of development. So that's where we focused our efforts. The city also reached out to property owners to gauge interests on all of the sites that are in the housing element draft for the lower income RENA. And then we also took into account, you know, environmental and geologic constraints, which you were just discussing on your earlier part of your agenda. So another big factor here in the city. That's it for that slide. So we tried to take a look at many different ways of addressing this number because the options are limited. And some of these paths just did not seem very viable, or there were limited sites. And so some of those are sites that are less than a half an acre that did not have potential to consolidate parcels into a larger site that are outside of the sorry, that are in the downtown or neighborhood centers. We also looked at the idea of internal conversion of existing homes. That is something that some communities in the state have pursued. We didn't find that your existing housing stock where multifamily would be a potential use made sense for that option. And we also put forward to the to you and the community the idea of a ballot measure to increase the height. And it was decided not to pursue that for the draft. Additional sites are also being proposed to receive the affordable housing overlay, which is one piece of the approach in the program section. A lot of those sites are already built with multifamily housing. So many of them are not included in the list in the housing element, but we'll have greater development potential applied to them if that overlay is adopted. Other vacant sites larger than a half an acre, we looked at the ball fields, we looked at open space, we talked with you about that. And ultimately, many of those sites were not considered good housing element sites for lots of reasons that are priorities for the community. We also thought about upzoning greater areas of the city, lower density areas outside of the downtown and the neighborhood centers. That did not look like it was going to be a clear path to addressing the housing element requirements either. And then finally, we thought about the idea of substantial rehabilitation, conversion, and preservation. This is another option that the state offers in very limited circumstances, and the city didn't meet the criteria for that option with the state. So this table shows what you'll see in the draft, how we're proposing to meet your RENA number. And you'll see the total RENA there. You'll see some units that have been approved since the middle of this year. And that was June 30th was the date that H C D allows SCAG jurisdictions to start counting projects that have received building permits. So there have been some A D Us and single-family residences that have been approved, and that that number may need updating for the next draft. We also projected accessory dwelling units. This is something that we've spoken with the community and the commission about multiple times. The number that is shown here is 297 units, and those are allocated according to a study that STAG, excuse me, SCAG conducted to look at affordability across the region. And the city is also taking into account, you know, permits that have been happening last year or this year. That number is tracking with the permits that are happening so far in 2021. And then you'll see units on vacant sites and non-vacant sites. That's going to be the bulk of the the number, and that's what I just talked about. The sites that we focused on make up those columns. So then we have a surplus column at the very end. You can see the numbers are not great there, and they do track with each category. So the state does allow us to combine the three lowest income categories as we've done there together. They allow for that, so there's a pretty small surplus number there. And then there are slightly higher numbers for the moderate and above moderate categories. Those are going to be more your market rate and and a little bit lower type sites. So the surplus can't be combined together for all the categories. It does track with each one. So that is what we're looking at right now. You know, like I said, the the permits are evolving as we move forward, and those can be counted. And then we will continue to look at what's what's in the inventory based on H C D's comments, based on any input that you have, and continue to work to meet that RENA number. I think I will hand it back to Liz now, and we're happy to get into more detail.
Thank you, Amy. The the heart of the housing element is, of course, the housing plan, which includes five goals and 38 programs. They were presented to you at the October 12 kickoff meeting with a bit more detail on each program. The bulk of the programs, 25 of them under goals two and three, are focused on production of more housing units, both affordable and above moderate and or what's known as market rate. When we get to questions and comments at the end, we can revisit those in more detail if any of the commissioners would like to see them. The housing element programs will be reviewed annually when the city submits progress reports to the state. This is going to take some additional staffing and better technology to support staff's work. There are two programs in the housing element related to this need. Those are Programs 3E, which is a policy to develop and and initiate an electronic permitting system. This is a project for which the city has received a grant and is actively working on. And Program 3L is a policy for increasing and maintaining planning and housing staff to rise to the challenge of implementing the housing elements' policies and maintaining compliance with state law. The city manager has discussed with council her intention to propose creating a housing division within the community development department in addition to new planning staff to process permits more quickly and efficiently. And this organizational change, of course, subject to approval by the council, will be important for successful implementation of the rest of the programs in the housing element. I just wanted to call those to your attention and move on to some frequently asked questions. So some F A Qs, and these are things that we've heard from member, you know, various members of the public and have questions that have been asked to us. So we thought we would maybe review a couple of those before we get into your questions and comments. So the first actually is the one that you asked at the meeting, which we presented to the community on October 21, which is where these programs come from. which we presented to the community on October 21st, which is where these programs come from. And how did we come up with these particular programs for this draft? So to start with, the current housing element programs were reviewed, and those that are still relevant will have been continued. So that represents 18 of the programs in the housing element, which is a little less than half of the total. Six new required programs that were not already amongst the 18 were added. And then HCD indicated a number of programs that they wanted to see included in the housing element to demonstrate how the city will comply with all the new housing requirements. That added 14 more programs. Beyond these, staff added the two programs that I just discussed on the previous slide for building capacity and a very general program that relates to implementing the latest state laws, SB 9 and SB 10, and those will be further discussed in the next agenda item. I won't get into those. So our next frequently asked questions are in regard to Program 3A for rezoning and redesignating sites to meet the RENA. So one question that is asked is how much rezoning is actually necessary to facilitate capacity for units for lower income RENA? And the answer is that in the, that is in the proposed draft, what we are proposing now in the current draft is there are about 29 and a half acres with sites that can accommodate 886 lower income units and 384 moderate income units. But that's what we are getting into our RENA compliance through rezoning, which is a significant number. The next question is, will this program need to be changed because of the new requirements? And the answer is yes, it will need to be changed in terms of the timeframe. The current draft, you'll see, says October 15, 2024 as the timeframe for that program, and it will be October 15, 2022. And the last is, does SB 9 change the housing elements option and reduce the need for rezoning? You might hear more about this in the next item, but what we are seeing is that that is not likely. And the reason is because the rezoning is really needed to accommodate parcels that are acceptable for lower income units. SB 9 is not expected to produce parcels that would fall into those categories. The duplexes that would be allowed through SB 9 are not going to be acceptable to HCD to substitute for rezoning for affordable units. So it is an important, in reality, it's going to be a very important housing developer, development tool that the state's requiring. It will not change the way we approach the RENA for lower income. So the next question is, does the housing element require a change to the city's ballot measure that limits the maximum height to 45 feet? And the quick answer to that is no. This is something that, as Amy said, was discussed in an earlier phase. The housing element does not make, does not require a change to that ballot measure. All of the densities that were proposed, we studied scenarios to make sure those densities could fit within the 45-foot height limit. And if they didn't fit, they weren't proposed. So projects with inclusionary units, of course, will be able to get the extra 10 feet and exceed the 45. But that would, that's basically status quo. That's nothing that requires any change to that ballot measure of the city. So last, we have, yes, last. How does the housing element support the proposed number of ADU units factored into the RENA, which was the 297 units, as Amy showed you on the previous slide? And so the answer is that there are five ADU support programs. Those are Programs 3G through 3K. Some of those are backup steps. In other words, if the number produced does not reach what we're expecting, some of those programs would kick in to encourage ADUs even further. But what we, there is a very clearly stated methodology in the appendix in the housing element. That methodology shows that the proposed 297 units was driven by data, by trends here in the city. And what we've seen in 2021 is that the applications continue to justify that methodology and the trends. In fact, there are over 50 to date that have been submitted in 2021 being processed by our planning staff. So with that, we bring you to the commissioner discussion, and we are happy to answer questions, and we want to hear your views. Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I don't know if there's anybody that has filled out a speaker card or raised a hand, and I don't know when you want to take those comments before making your own comments and providing direction.
Why don't, why don't we go ahead and do public comment now? Commissioners can take that into account.
Okay, if you are speaking on Zoom and you would like to speak on this item, please raise your hand. Okay, we'll start with Sean Mann. Please unmute yourself.
Hi, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Can you hear me okay? Hello, can you guys hear me? Hello? I'm sorry, I can't hear you guys, but I hope you can hear me. My name is Sean Mann. I'm a member of the Southwest Regional Council of Carpenters. I'm a resident of LA County, and I live and work in the vicinity of the project area. I believe that you and I both would be impacted by the environmental impacts of this project. The city should require housing projects developed pursuant to the housing element update to be built utilizing a local and skilled and trained workforce. The local hire and skilled and trained workforce requirements reduce construction-related environmental impacts while benefiting the local economy. In a recent 2020 report... I'm so sorry. Can you guys hear me okay?
Unmute yourself.
I believe I am muted myself. Can you guys hear me? Hello?
Ms. Hill, can you try unmuting?
Hello, this is Samantha Hill. I did get the pop-up saying that I could unmute. I heard Sean's...
It's like you're talking, but we can't actually hear you.
Oh, interesting. Hello, can you hear me?
Oh, hold on, let's try that.
Can you guys hear me okay?
Oh, here we go. Sorry, we had the computer muted. So actually, if we can go ahead and start with Mr. Mann first.
Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen. I'm so sorry. Go ahead, continue. I'm sorry.
Sorry, go ahead, Mr. Mann.
Thank you very much. Good evening to you all. My name is Sean Mann. I'm a resident, I'm sorry, I'm a member of the Southwest Regional Council of Carpenters. I believe that you guys and myself and everyone in the community will be impacted by the environmental impacts of this project. I feel that the city should require housing projects developed pursuant to the housing element update to build, to be built utilizing local and skilled and trained workforce. Local hire and skilled and trained workforce requirements reduce construction-related environmental impacts while benefiting the local economy. In a recent 2020 report titled "Putting California on the High Road: A Jobs and Climate Action Plan for 2030", the California Workforce Development Board concluded that investments in growing, diversifying, and upskilling California's workforce can positively affect returns on climate mitigation efforts. Moreover, just this year, the South Coast Air Quality Management District found that the use of a local state-certified apprenticeship program or skilled and trained workforce with a local hire component can result in air pollutant reductions. Recently, the city of Hayward in Northern California has adopted skilled and trained workforce requirements into its general plan and municipal code. Local skilled and trained workforce requirements can boost economic development and mitigate transportation and greenhouse gas impacts by minimizing vehicle miles traveled. And the city should add local skilled and trained workforce requirements for future housing projects to address regional housing needs to benefit the city's economic development as well as the environment. Thank you very much for your time, and I hope you guys have a good evening.
Thank you.
Okay, next, Samantha Hill, if you would unmute yourself.
Hello, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. This is Samantha Hill. I am a local resident here in South Pasadena. I am also an architect. And I just have a question regarding the program specifically. I know that in the housing element draft, there were various programs that were mentioned, specifically programs, finance programs from the state. So Cal Homes is one, Cal HFA. All of these are programs, well, at least the programs I'm familiar with, that provide ADU, financing for ADU for affordable housing. And so I'm just curious how that relates to the housing element, and if the city is taking any steps or measures to start applying for these specific financing opportunities.
Question is duly noted.
Next, we have Jason Green. You may go ahead and unmute yourself. We have Josh Elbikson.
Elbikson, close enough. Hey, guys. So what was I going to say? Okay, so you guys have my email. The only thing I really want to emphasize again is, Amy Sessimer should have your 30-day meeting with Oxnard either today, tomorrow, yesterday. I've read about 60 different housing elements. I've only seen about three have this wildly optimistic ADU claims as Oxnard, South Pasadena, and Yorba Linda is the other one with wildly optimistic claims in their housing elements. No one else has ADU numbers like this. And I've read maybe about 70 letters from HCD regarding housing elements. They haven't allowed anybody to go significantly above their safe harbor, like maybe 10% if they're lucky. So what I would ask, what I think you guys should do is you guys have your special meeting on November 11th. Amy absolutely would have had her 30-day meeting about the Oxnard housing element, where Oxnard claims 500 ADUs based on what should be a safe harbor of about 100. HCD will definitely tell her whether or not that is allowed. They should tell you guys at that time, so you guys can start planning. Because, I mean, they've already turned in the housing element without you guys really having much of a say in it. So, I mean, they've already skipped you guys for that part. You guys should start to work on if that, start to work on the next version of the housing element when HCD tells you guys that you can't claim 277 and you have to claim 81. That's it. Thank you very much. You can read the rest of my stuff.
Thank you. Next.
Jason Green? Would you like to speak?
Hello, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
There we go. Sorry about that. I have a little bit of technical difficulties. First and foremost, my name is Jason Green. I'm a union carpenter. The reason why I'm calling is I believe that these projects that you're speaking upon, this one and future projects, should have a skilled and trained workforce. Basically, what that means is that individuals working on construction have graduated at an apprenticeship program, a state-accredited apprenticeship program through the state of California. Let's take it easy. Think about it, guys. You can't do anything in the state of California without being skilled. So if you think about it, you shouldn't have people building buildings that our families are going to live in, and they're not being skilled and trained. With you guys, you guys can implement that skilled and trained workforce. Also helps the community out with good-paying jobs, benefits and wages, that these people could not just have a job, they can have a career and also develop the community that they live in. That's pretty much all I got. Thank you very much. Have a great night.
Thank you.
And that concludes our speakers.
Thank you. So we'll move on to commissioner questions and comments. I think before, before we start, to put some order to it, do we have a lot of comments and questions outside of kind of the 6.8, the housing plan? Or how do people want to go about this? You can go by, you know, section by section.
I think the question is, given that there's this new timing for the approval, because we thought we were under the gun to get the city council to approve this on February, by February 11. I guess I just, I mean, at this point, since we're now looking at approving like April, May, I'm just sort of wondering what the new, I got you your new timeline, but sort of thinking through, are we gonna, what do we need at this point? I mean, we've looked at this. Do we address comments and questions? Is there going to be more community outreach? Or it sounds like now the general plan and specific plan are going to come back. So maybe just, I don't know, I'm sort of not sure what you want from us tonight, given that there's now this new timeline?
I think Ms. Borrell is the one who's probably best suited to talk about the timeline. But in brief, 1398 doesn't change much in terms of your portion of the timeline. It changes the end requirement that we adopt the zoning code amendments. And it changes the middle a little bit of how we're going to get there. But the tonight, the next month, the next month and a half, two months, doesn't change much at all, other than emphasize that we still need to get all of this done now.
Okay.
And we still want your comments now. It's a, and we will be going also to the council next week. And what we really want is, what should we be looking at most carefully? Or, you know, any thoughts you have at all? Because when we get HCD's comments, we want to have yours. We want to have the councils. We want to have the communities and HCDs. And then we're going to be developing that final draft in January.
And you're taking this to the council next week?
Yes, November 7.
So this is not something we have to approve. This is just input?
Oh, no, this is not a hearing. Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. Thank you.
So I mean, I just want to break this up into manageable chunks, if people think we can just go person by person. I'm just trying to figure out how much comments.
Mine are not just in that objectives program section. They're kind of all over the map as well. No, not a lot.
Let's then kind of take it commissioner by commissioner. See if we need to come back. This is a discussion too, so we...
Sure. I mean, I understand the concern generally has been, you know, a lot of focus on how the ADU number is going to do. However, if you look at sort of our overall strategy, more than 80% of our capacity is actually coming from non-vacant, yet-to-be-rezoned sites. And that site inventory and capacity of those sites, as per the new general plan and specific plan, are going to be critical. And I was, you know, maybe it's a question to Liz, and I was, I was trying to look through sort of other housing elements which are further along, or HCD... I was trying to look through sort of other housing elements which are further along, or HCD comments that have come back. And I was actually looking at Santa Monica's. It seems like if there is a, if more than 50% of the lower income units are being accommodated in sort of non-vacant, yet to be rezoned sites, there is sort of a higher threshold of how you've identified those sites. And, you know, are they ready for development and what makes us so certain that they're ready for development? So I think that inventory then becomes critical. And we spent some time in previous meetings really talking a little bit about that inventory. And I saw that we mentioned that we actually did the outreach. We heard back from some of the property owners who are kind of maybe not interested. Others have actually expressed interest, and then there are those in between who are kind of either neutral or, you know, don't have any immediate plans but are not opposed to it. But I was curious as to how, you know, eventually we landed up on the inventory that we planted up right now. And are the policy levers that we are sort of targeting as part of the general plan update sort of sufficient to arrive at the numbers that we're arriving at? And I don't know if there are any outliers out there, but was generally trying to get a sense of that because that is the biggest number. And I think that's where most of our focus should be to, one, that and affordability question is where most of our focus should be to make sure that we are kind of on target. And I don't know, Amy or Liz, if you want to respond to that.
Yeah, happy to. So first of all, yes, there is a higher bar for providing evidence that a site is likely to redevelop as housing during the planning period for jurisdictions that have more than 50% of their lower income arena on non-vacant sites, which is the case here. So part of why outreach to property owners was undertaken was to address that. That's not a requirement, but that is something that the city decided to do prior to proposing rezoning on sites. And so any site, like you said, that a property owner said they were not interested in residential development, that those sites were removed from the lower income list. In terms of the level of evidence that's required, we did talk with HCD about that during the preliminary review. We looked at all of the state requirements and we gathered as much data and put forward as much regional evidence of development trends that we could in the draft. So in terms of what's been happening with other reviews, you know, SCAG is somewhat in uncharted territory here in terms of the numbers that are before so many of the jurisdictions. So there's not a huge track record yet on how HCD is going to weigh in on a situation like South Pasadena's. So I don't, I don't know yet.
I think the question is, particularly since, you know, historically, there's been several, you know, this sort of unprecedented amount of development activity that we're kind of filled capacity for. And HCD's sort of initial response is like, show us the evidence. But well, we can't show you the evidence because, you know, we're really changing the rules here and the new policies are going to come into play. I was curious as to, you know, yes, we don't know what would be the most convincing evidence, but is it under similar policy parameters in, let's say, a neighboring city or in the same market, we've seen these kinds of behavior? Is that, is that what they're mostly looking at when sort of the evidence does not come from within the jurisdiction? For example, because of historic reason?
Yeah, regional trends is definitely something that they have asked for, not just this cycle, but previous cycles. And so we tried to include that. And I'm sorry, I can't remember the rest of, there were a couple of different points.
No, I mean, is it like, I know it's regional, but is it like more than, is it a little more focused than regional? Is it more sub-regional? Because what happens in Comdale is very different from what happens here, right?
We tried to look in relatively, you know, we looked at Pasadena, for example. Their inclusionary ordinance was something that is discussed in the draft to support the ordinance that you've put in place and the experience that they've had. So that's one example. And then we, in terms of projects, we looked a little further afield, but definitely, you know, in this part of LA County, not the whole SCAG region.
Yeah, I mean, to me, like, that is the, that's one of the areas where I think we should be prepared to provide sort of, you know, evidence in different ways where, you know, I think, I think that could really strengthen. And I think, I think we've done that, but to the extent that we could look at sort of cities with neighboring cities, and maybe Pasadena is one example, but with similar policy levers, right? You know, it's like that have kind of responded, that the market has responded and, and development is happening. Because I think that's, that's one of the only ways that we can show that these sites actually, and the policy levers that we have are going to work together.
Yeah. If there, if anyone wants to suggest anything that they don't see in there that we haven't presented, I know we've presented quite a bit. I think you may not have been on the commission the whole time, but we, you know, got into a lot of different examples and they didn't all end up in the draft. So if there's anything that you think that you would personally suggest, we're very open to that.
Yeah, and I'd be happy to sort of.
That as well, just in general.
Sure. And then on incentives, I was on the affordability side. And I was curious in terms of how, I know that we have our inclusionary ordinance, which, which is sort of perhaps the only local lever that we have to sort of create, or maybe, maybe the most important one that we have to create, other than the fact that we, my understanding is that within the parameters defined by HCD and precedence, we need to demonstrate that there may be sites which are appropriate for 100% affordable projects, right? And which will get tax credit financing or something from other places and be sort of 100% affordable in addition to obviously the inclusionary, because the inclusionary alone does not meet affordability goals if everything was in place. Am I right in sort of interpreting that? And that's the way we've kind of arrived that our affordability sort of a way to meet our overall affordability goals?
The way that the unit mix in the inventory is set up right now and the sites anticipates, yeah, different types of projects, including potentially 100% affordable.
And how does HCD look at that sort of, the reasoning behind that? And is it, is it site?
They look at the ownership of the land, they look at the size of the land, they look at the proximity to service, you know, the things that would go into an application for funding.
And if they're appropriate for affordable, then.
You know, good candidates for that. That isn't my area of expertise per se, but I believe that, you know, proximity to transit and amenities are positives in that regard. And, you know, it, the housing element doesn't get into, you know, analysis of a project itself being on a site, but having a good mix of, of sites is definitely part of it. Working within the constraints of the, you know, sites that are here in your city. We put that best list forward based on what we've learned so far.
Those are my big questions, but I'm sure there'll be others as.
Agreed with you 100% on the, you know, having a very good chunk of our egg, to speak, in the, in the non-vacant sites, meaning rezoning baskets. And that, that was apparent to me before, but not as apparent as it is now.
Yeah, given the, the new timeline now under AB 1398, my concern has shifted to the October 22 deadline. And although this may seem like jumping the gun, I think we really need to start designing and planning how all those own changes are going to take effect before October 15. And if I'm not mistaken, we, we also need to do zoning code text amendments as well, not just map amendments, because we're changing zoning on some property, new zoning that doesn't exist in our code. And then just a question, it looks like maybe a lot of the zone changes will be accomplished by just adding an overlay to the properties that are outside of the specific plan areas. I noted there's something called an affordable housing overlay or a housing opportunity site. So am I correct that the zone changes will just be adding overlay to the existing zoning on outside of the specific plan area?
But I'm not sure if all of the areas that will be changed for zoning are within just the specific plan, because the downtown specific plan, you know.
There's a lot of sites that are outside.
Farm in that plan, or is that, it's within downtown specific plan? It's not within, yeah. So for instance, the ostrich farm and some of those areas that are not within the downtown specific plan will need rezoning in addition to the overlay.
Right. Okay. And do on the sites that we were talking about, all these opportunity sites, do any of the, will any of the rezonings create non-conforming, the existing uses to be non-conforming with the new zoning? Or is it just an additional opportunity for those sites? But I want to make sure that we're not, for example, one of the sites is the Methodist Church on Monterey Road. I want to make sure that we're not now saying you can no longer, or your existing church is non-conforming because now it's a housing opportunity site.
Right. That's an important consideration when we actually get to that, to that process.
Okay.
I just note that the Methodist Church site is, is an overlay, proposed to receive the overlay, so there wouldn't be a non-conforming issue there.
Okay. And then some of the opportunity sites require lot consolidation, but I'm hopeful that that's not something that we have to do. That would just be a later thing, I'm hoping.
Right.
And how, how will we handle significant property owner or neighborhood opposition to these sites if we're relying on them to meet our arena? And we've put them in our housing elements that's adopted. And then in the process, we have significant opposition to some of those own changes.
So if there's significant property owner opposition, then they won't be in there because that, that would eliminate them from being in the inventory.
Okay.
And then, you know, let's keep in mind that, that the inventory is a way of showing the state that the city has capacity to develop the number of units we're being told we have to have capacity to develop, which is a very high number. It, it isn't a situation where if the inventory says a specific amount of housing that, that is feasible to be developed, that it has to be developed that way. We have to manage the inventory through the eight years to come to make sure that when properties are developed and then therefore removed from that inventory, is there still capacity for what's left to be developed? And that is part of that ongoing monitoring. But in terms of opposition to a project, neighboring opposition, each development will come forward as a development project through the city's processes, whether they be discretionary, in which case they would come to a hearing, or they could be ministerial administrative processes, in which case if they comply and meet all the requirements, they don't come to a hearing. That's, that's just, that just gets continued. Those are not things that are worked out before the housing element is actually adopted.
Right, but I was talking about opposition to the zone changes itself, not the project.
Oh, to the zone changes themselves. Well, and again, so those are policy decisions of, of the council and recommendation of the planning commission, and, and they go through that process.
So I would, I would just recommend that staff develop a timeline and a procedure now, not waiting until the housing element is, you know, adopted to meet that deadline. I just, in my experience, that could take a lot longer than we think it will take.
Right, absolutely. And, and just, I will, I will just add, if you don't mind, that a big part of that process always, time-wise especially, is SEQA. And the SEQA review that we are doing for the general plan will, if, if the zoning is consistent with the general plan, then it, there's either no SEQA review or just a very short, you know, compliance consistency kind of review. And so that is something that we have thought about in terms of saying that it is possible by October 15th, because it will rely on the same SEQA.
Okay. Moving on, I noticed that in both the ADUs that have been built so far in 2021 and the ones for the future, we've assigned them an affordable housing category. And I just was wondering, how do we determine that for ADUs? So we've projected that of the ADUs, they'll be in certain income categories. And I'm just wondering, how do, how do we do that?
So SCAG undertook a study across their whole region to gather data on how much ADUs are actually renting for. And that study was published at the end of last year, and HCD approved that that be, could be used by jurisdictions to project their accessory dwelling unit numbers. So that is what we've done. And so there are actually percentages of each category, income category in there, and it's broken out by subregions. So I believe it's called the Los Angeles 2 subregion is the one that South Pasadena is in, in there.
So it's not based on the size of the ADU or their location? It's just for every 180 use that are built, we know that they'll be in a specific grouping or some.
Well, it was based on a, you know, as, as much hard data as they could get, you know, in the number of months that they undertook the survey. So it was definitely a point in time type of thing. But that's, that's what it was based on. And then, you know, when the city actually builds ADUs, then you can, you know, try to determine how much they are renting for locally. That's something that the state encourages, is trying to gather data on that. But what we used for the draft is that SCAG study.
On page 126 of the Housing Element, there's a table about ADUs and it puts them in two columns. One of them says planning permits and one is building permits. And I was wondering if you could explain what the difference between those are. On a subsequent table, that planning permit column is called planning applications. So I don't know if that's what it was meant or, because there's a significant drop between planning permits and building permits. And I just wanted to know what that was.
So applications would be if an application has been submitted.
Right.
A permit would be an entitlement has been approved. And for an ADU, that might not be. That would just be the, actually, now I'm getting confused because building permit is all that's required for some ADUs. But if there's an earlier approval than a building permit, that would be what that permit is. And then building permit is when they've actually had their building permit issued. And that's when the state allows jurisdictions to count ADUs.
Did I get that right? Yeah, I'll just add that Amy is correct, there's not really a separate ADU planning permit, but really it's basically the planning does a review and says, yes, this can comply. Go ahead and go for your building permit. So that's the process that South Pasadena has been, has been using. Kind of this two-step planning says, good to go, and then you submit your building permit.
But it sounds like you're counting three things. You're counting an application, which isn't necessarily an approval. Then, then the planning, you know, planning approval, then building.
Right. And I think this, correct, yeah, this, I mean, this table, the, the idea was just to show what's the level of interest coming in, but really the building permits are what end up counting. And so the 297, what we got to that is there could be, you know, And so the 297, what we got to that is there could be, you know, 500 planning applications. But, you know, maybe some of them don't go through to get to buildings. So it was a very conservative approach, also assuming that even though there's growing and growing interest, that at some point around, I believe it was around the fourth year or so, it will plateau, like the interest will plateau. So we're not saying growth like this for eight years, but growth like this and then kind of plateauing a bit.
So my point that I'd like to make then is I think that's an opportunity to get more units by trying to close that gap between interest or permit or application and building permits. So I would suggest some, maybe adding a program. I know we have some programs that are generally supportive, but I was thinking of something more specific to target that group. You know, once they've submitted an application, we dog them and we mentor them and we provide, you know, ombudsman or whatever to get them through the process so that they don't give up, you know, in between those two points.
Yeah, and that does also speak to this need for more staffing.
Right, sure. Or even, you know, connecting them with other property owners that have been through the process or just, you know, whatever to try and close that gap between those two columns.
Just since we're on the topic, I've seen other municipalities offer technical assistance because there's a challenge of kind of understanding what a building permit is and kind of going through it. And then there's also just kind of coordinating with public works, fire, building, utilities. So, you know, having someone who can just answer your questions and kind of help, say, call this guy goes a long way. Something to think about.
And then my last question is on page 72 and 73 in that fair housing section, environmental health, there's a I think I'm reading this right, it said that water quality in all of our census tracts is at the 84th percentile, which I think is a bad thing to be at the top, not a, a good thing unless I'm misreading that. And there's a program, 1E, that's supposed to deal with that, but it's a very, I think, very doesn't seem to be as urgently addressing that need as I, I would think we need to if 84th percentile of having poor water quality. But if I was totally wrong, then please correct me.
Excuse me, I'll have to look into the question about whether 84 is not a good number. I don't have that data on the top of my head.
Okay.
And then we can definitely strengthen that program if that's something the commission would like to see.
Thank you. Vice Chair.
Thank you. That seems like one of the recurring themes is the need for the community development department to address and assure, along with other decisions and budget policy or plans within the city, address the staffing needed to administer 38 programs over the eight-year period, assuming everything is approved. So those two programs, 3E, 3L, the electronic permits, that, I mean, that's urgent, that's part of the ADU. How things keep moving through the system that could affect how viable things look to HCD in the future. And the staffing, and it's not just budget. I mean, that's a broader issue that's not a topic of this commission. But I'd say, you know, there's financial questions. And then I think there's structural, social questions of how you retain an institution that's productive and can process what is like a really ambitious order. So, I mean, I think, maybe it goes without saying, but it doesn't hurt to say it. I think it's something we need to kind of get at and I'm sure council weighs on a lot of these things as well, city council. For the planning commission meetings coming up, it sounds like we may need more meetings in early 2022. I mean, if that's the case, based on the schedule that Liz, thank you for outlining that. I think the question that's come up in prior meetings of can we start to identify and calendar every other Tuesday? It seems like we're starting to average multiple meetings a month we have over the last year. It would help if we always knew, at least for me, I don't know how their commissioners feel, that could be a topic later outside of this meeting. Do we want to just hold every other Tuesday for these additional meetings? It could also help the community know when these things are falling, you know, versus dates. And maybe the issue of dates is more complicated than, than I understand. I was hearing that there's one hearing, one public hearing for the general plan, downtown specific plan and housing element, I believe, coming forward, that all of those will be put together. There are workshops leading up to it, but there's one hearing. Did I hear that correctly, Liz?
Potentially, it could be done in one hearing. And that will be something that, that would be up to, to the commission if, if the commission didn't feel that that was a good way to do it and wanted to do them separately.
I, I think it's, I mean, I think it's, oh, I'm sorry, Liz, I think it's related to what Commissioner Dahl brought up, which is, you know, I attended the prior workshop on the housing element and I was surprised how lightly it was attended. We've got residents, you know, participating tonight via Zoom, but not present here. Just, you know, I think those steps of however word gets out, we engage or relay information is going to be key leading up to it because of the issue of we're staying on schedule so far. But when it, when it becomes more public or there's an awareness that actually is, is present and people respond to it, whether it's, oh, now we're talking rezoning, you know, if there's a way to anticipate that so we don't get off track at the, at the nth hour, the ninth hour, that, that would be helpful. And I'm sure it's things staff has thought about. The rezoning, this issue with the rezoning, so it, it sounds like the height, the height wouldn't be proposed to change. And, and from prior overview presentations we've been given, which have all been very good and very thoughtful, to me, it suggests we need to be prepared for bulkier projects with smaller units. I mean, if I absorbed what we've been, what we've been presented over the last year or two. So, and I think residents should also understand that the height, there's a relation of high quality project or what the quality of the units are like. I mean, that's but if 85% of the arena numbers require rezoning and the number was 29 and a half acres, and my math may be wrong because I'm doing it up here on the dais very quickly on my phone. But is that less than 1% of sites in the city are subject to that to meet the requirement? I mean, having some context for where, like, what is the scale of the change on these non-vital parcels could be helpful. Because you may hear something and be very concerned about it, but when you look at what it affects, I mean, and, and my math may be totally off. That might be helpful, I think, for the community to understand.
Earlier in the process, before you ran the commission, there were some massing studies that were presented for different sites around town.
I saw those, yeah, correct, correct. But I think just the scale of what is, what changes is going to be important to understand in, in the context of the entire city.
Thank you.
Oh, sorry, one last thing. If staff could, I thought the public comment about the local workforce training and the reduction of greenhouse gas and VMT is a very valid comment, a very timely one, that I think it would be really valuable for staff to appreciate. Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
There was just a comment about the height isn't going to change, I'm paraphrasing. But when Liz was making that comment earlier, that was in relation to the 45-foot height citywide maximum limit that was done years ago by resolution, or by voters. There are various zones where height will go up. And subzones, in particular in the downtown specific plan, there'll be some changes with that. So I just don't want there to be any misconception that height isn't going to change from what it currently is. We won't be busting through the 45-foot height barrier, but there will be localized increases in height limits.
Right, thank you. That's a very, very, very important clarification. And now that you said it, I remember the presentations and the, the height proposals. Okay, I'll look forward to hearing more as they come through in the workshops and, and the hearing. Thank you, Steph.
You mean in addition to projects that are, that could actually get the session using a density problem?
Correct.
You're talking more of zoning change.
Correct. Yeah, there's some zoning that will change, particularly in the downtown area. Well, I think it's exclusively in the downtown area.
So, um, thank you for the presentation. And I feel like we've been talking about this for three years. I think we have or more, four years. This has been, so it's just been a long process. It just is what it is. But I'm a little, I have three broad comments. Okay, the first one is, I, I know we say we're having these community outreach meetings and things, but I do think I'm concerned that people aren't really understanding what we're doing. That's going to have an impact on the city. And I think it might be because when you tell a resident, we're having a meeting about the housing element. I'm not sure everybody really knows what that really means. If you, you know, if you talk about like the, oh, we're having a general plan, a specific plan and a housing element, which the city is, is going to consider changes to zoning and we have to build 2,000 unit, or we have to plan to build, you know, 2,000 units in the next eight years, that will get people's attention. What my concern today is, is that we haven't reached out enough in sort of plain English as to what we're doing. And the backlash from that is going to be, once they, once people kind of wake up, they're going to be like, what just happened here? So that's just sort of, I don't know whether we can, when we do more outreach, we can really sort of make the language a little clearer. But that's my concern. Number two, and I know we're getting the presentation on SB nine and SB 10. But are there other things out there that might impact the housing element that maybe we haven't really talked about that much? The SB nine, SB 10 and the Caltrans housing? I don't know if that's, I know we, it's, as I recall over the last four years or so, that we, we kind of talk about that. But I'm not, I don't really remember whether that's part of the plan, not part of the plan. I mean, things are changing on that. So that's just an overall question. And number three, and I know I've brought this up before, but, and I understand what the, what the rules are and the state laws are. But I think there are some cities kind of getting together to sort of try to fight some of this. That doesn't mean we don't also parallel track compliance. But what are we doing or considering to sort of, there is no way these cities are going to comply. I mean, it's not even, it's, it's at least many of them. I mean, what's Pasadena's number, 11,000, something like that? So I'm just wondering whether we're exploring methods to really take on the state here because I got to believe there's, people are, they're just going to have a difficult time. And then my other question, I think you've provided this answer before, is so what if we don't comply with the October? I know then they take over control, but I think if there's enough cities that are, are getting together and saying like, you can pass the law, but, you know, I mean, we can only do what we can do. I, I, I mean, again, I, I wouldn't suggest that as a strategy. But certainly while we're dealing with all these issues, like what are the other things that we should be doing? And I think we should be looking at other cities. SCAG certainly must be doing something. I mean, I, about kind of the numbers, et cetera. So anyway, so those are my three overarching things. I mean, honestly, Sacramento is completely out of control. And I think the cities are really going to have to start getting together, and I think they have, but I don't know that for sure.
Very good questions and comments. As far as what SCAG's doing, SCAG is doing what SCAG is supposed to do, what they're tasked with doing, which is passing on allocations in order to reduce greenhouse gas numbers with SB 75 and all of that programming. And to, but they're not an advocate for individual cities. Cogs may be and groups of cities may be, and an individual city is certainly. And you're right, there is a group of cities considering the legal challenge. It's the Orange County Cog challenging the statewide allocation. And if we think of it as each city as a numerator and the total number of houses statewide is the denominator, challenging the denominator of the 2 million or whatever the number was, units statewide is too many units. And then that, as it is allocated throughout all of the, the planning organizations and SCAG getting its allocation, the argument is that the SCAG allocation is just wrong, not what SCAG did to divide it up.
I, I understand all of that.
Right.
But we should be part of that. I mean, because.
So we were aware of it, but do we be, there's, there's no, there's not enough staff, there's not enough time, there's not enough resources to dive in to be part of a coalition that they win, they lose on its own. And, and so if they do win, the, the numerator isn't the issue, it's the denominator. The denominator will change and will get smaller and we would benefit.
Right, I, I just, you know, this, this city fought a freeway for 50 years. So, so it's not outside of, it wouldn't be surprising for us to fight something. I'm not necessarily saying that is something we should do. And I, I think the plan is great to like sort of move ahead with everything you're doing. I think parallel tracks, I just think this, I think we really need to look at this and figure out what people are doing. And because it's not just this, more is coming. And, and this, this is, I mean, more is coming. So I, I just think the city really has to take a good hard look of when do we jump in to the fight?
We just said we've been working on this for four years, right? But I feel like there's been a moving target, you know, kind of every six months within that four years. So it's, you know, there's making regulations that are impossible to meet.
Yes.
Which to me is bad legislation. But, you know, I, so my, one of my questions, which is related to yours is, you know, as of that February date, will HCD publish how many cities are compliant and how many are not? So we should know, you know, if 40% of the state is out of compliance, there's probably something wrong with the.
Yeah, but HCD does publish, they continually publish compliance. And you can go on their website tomorrow morning, if you like, and see who's in compliance and who isn't. And on that date, they probably will update it because that will be a point at which they will
Yeah.
draw a certain line, so.
It's coming, I think.
Yeah, they just updated their website recently to have it be even more in real time. They used to not update it every week. Much more frequent, so that is available.
Okay, thank you.
My understanding is a lot of SCAG will not be in compliance at that point. We will see.
There's also a changing landscape in the enforcement. It used to be that cities would be able to skate a year, two years, six years into a, a cycle and not have a certified housing element. It's still just making progress. Well, those days are over. And just last week, AG Bonta announced a task force to take on cities that are not following housing laws. So not only are we going to have the issues of HCD seeking enforcement or private entities seeking, challenging and getting an injunction for a judge to tell us to do, what to do. But now AG Bonta will be pursuing cities. a judge to tell us to do, what to do, but now AG Bonta will be pursuing cities that are not doing what they're supposed to do.
Like I said, more is coming.
Yeah.
At some point, there's going to be a breaking point. I just, I, I'd like to be, I'd like South Pasadena to sort of, you know, do, investigate what's, what's going on out there in the landscape of, of other cities.
Are you, are you done? So, most of my points have been covered, and my computer shut down, so my specific ones aren't available to me at this moment. But one of the things that I did pick up on is the maps that go with the, with the site identification, and I'd like more clarity. I think we could do better with the maps. The key isn't super clear. So, I think, you know, there needs to be a statement saying, "These are the, you know, the available, these are the properties that have been identified, and then these are the zones that they are in." But I feel like, given GIS tools, we could, you know, write on the map, say, "This is a vacant parcel, this is a non-vacant parcel," so that we don't have to go flipping back and forth between different charts, and I feel like it could be done graphically clearer and simpler to follow. I'm an architect, so I go right to the pictures. So, in addition to the other comments, and particularly the concern about the non-vacant parcels needing rezoning, constituting 70, 80% of our requirements. And I'm not quite as concerned about the public outreach. I think that, I do think there's been a lot going on. I know I've talked to people about it, but I don't see them kind of grabbing the opportunities to participate. Yeah. So, I, well, I think it's a tough time to get people to totally engage with things. So, I will provide some follow-up comments. So, any closing thoughts before we...
I think on the outreach, I think what Commissioner Dahl mentioned, and Commissioner Pron was saying, I, I think there is a risk that the realization will come during the general plan and the specific plan update, and we don't want to upend that process, stay ahead of that, because, you know, that's like, kind of rubber hitting the road a little bit, and, and with 80%, I think Commissioner Padilla, you gave another metric, like, yeah, it's 80% of the new capacity is actually on 1% of the land area, or something like that, right? So, which, you know, which definitely will have implications on, on community perception, on, you know, what is it we're talking about in terms of development quality, density, and other issues.
So, you know, just back to community outreach, sometimes you can't get the people to come to them, you have to go to the people. So, some materials, boards, even the PowerPoints and getting, you know, I know we're limited in, in people power, but, you know, a booth at the farmer's market is a good place to show people what's going on, because they're there. Looking, or, you know, stopping by a PTA meeting and just saying, "Hey, this is going on," those are places that it's easy to grab a crowd, and just at least give a 30-second overview of, "Hey, this is a process that's going on. It's going to affect you, it's going to affect the quality of schools, it's going to affect the quality of open space, whatever it may be." Just a suggestion, it's different than expecting people to come to you to go to the... We've been successful. So, with that, I will close the item on the housing element, and we do appreciate all the work that's gone into this, it's a lot. So, let's hear, hear about more changes. The SB nine and SB ten presentation.
Thank you. Can you put that into presentation mode, so it's the full screen? Uh, work frozen?
Go into slideshow.
Oh, well, thank you. So, there was a quest to discuss SB nine and SB ten, and even though this slide says SB nine and SB nine, it will be talking about both SB nine and SB ten.
Right.
Next slide? Oh, we got it correct. So, this, these bills will not become, or SB nine we'll talk about first, it becomes effective January 1st. This deals essentially with the splitting of existing residential lot into two lots. And then on each lot, you can put two structures, either two, a primary structure and a JEDU, or a primary structure and a smaller structure. Next? The It's kicked off by an application for two residential units on an existing legal parcel, where it's either a duplex, one existing and one new unit, or two new units, one of which can be an ADU or a JED. The important thing to note about this process is that it's ministerial in nature. There would be no discretionary review before the city council or the planning commission. These are over-the-counter permits. The permits would have to abide by objective zoning standards such as setbacks, beside and rear yards, off-street parking. There has, however, been a recent case called San Mateo, in the city of San Mateo, that deals with what is an objective standard. And so, cities throughout the state are in the process of reviewing what we think are objective standards, and whether or not, as applied, they truly are. Things like setbacks, likely, as stated in South Pasadena's code, would still be objective. Off-street parking likely as well. Next?
I have some questions until there was a
Sure.
size requirement that they all
I don't know that FAR comes into play in this, but the there are requirements for the relative size of the two. There are requirements on the minimum size of a lot, and, but I believe the minimum size is something like 1,200 square feet. So, taking, say, a 10,000-square-foot lot and creating a 1,200-square-foot lot on it, that becomes the, the second lot there. That's the type of thing that we're now being faced with. State law actually requires that short-term rentals be banned, so this is not an opportunity to make more units in order to have a, a healthy rental market for short term. It's to have a healthy housing market, either for long-term rentals or for permanent housing on an ownership basis. One of the advantages, I guess, one of the critiques with ADU law has been, it doesn't allow for people to participate as owners of property. If you, you create an ADU and a JEDU and a primary unit, now you just, you have someone who owns the, the property and owns these other two rentals, and the families that move into those other two types of units are not able to participate in the ownership experience. But SB nine allows for more lots to be created, which then are subdivided and able by right, rather than going through a subdivision process, and are able for more people to then participate in ownership. Next? There is an ability for cities to deny projects, but it is a, a very high bar. It's where the building official must make a written finding that a preponderance of evidence exists, that the proposed development would have specific, unmitigatable adverse impacts on public health and safety, or the physical environment. That's a pretty high standard, although there are situations where that could occur, and so that's the type of thing that the building official and the planning department would be looking out for. The other situation where a denial could occur is when there would be the demolition of more than 25% of the exterior walls of a structure. This is not a, a means to simply go through and raise buildings and build new ones. This is a, a means to add to what's already allowed. This does not apply to townhomes or condominium developments. This is only in relation to single-family, what's traditionally been called, single-family residential R1-type zoning. The common way this has been construed is, this will allow there to be four lots, four units, sorry, four units where there's currently one unit. In reality, it's more like it's allowing four where there's currently allowed three. Because currently, every R1 would be allowed to have the existing unit, an ADU, and a JEDU. And what this does is, it says, on that same place where you can put three units, now you can actually get a lot split and put two units on each of those two lots. Next? Thank you. So, ministerial review would occur, and we must split the lot resident, or ministerially, if a single-family lot is being split into relatively equal size, where one of the lots is no less than 40% of the original parcel. The parcel has not previously been split, and both lots are at least 1,200 square foot after the split. By example, earlier of the 10,000 carve-off, that was extreme and would not apply. But it does allow for a very small lot to occur, and on that 1,200-square-foot lot, the right to put two units. How that would occur, I'm not one of the architects sitting up here, so I'll let, let you guys design that. So, again, up to four units between those two new lots, and it could be an ADU or a JDADU included in that.
Can I ask a quick question somewhere here?
Certainly.
Are there, would a requirement for requi, for requiring parking, for example, on, for each unit, would that be something that ministerially works under this? I mean, a 1,200-square-foot lot with two parts, two, it just doesn't make sense. I mean, we, we currently have some parking limitations, I think, in our code, right? I mean, they have to have a certain number of parking spaces, so is that something we could still impose?
It's not so much that we could impose it, it's that it is imposed, and that's one of those objective standards. And so, yes, it's imposed, but it's the manner in which you impose it. You would essentially be imposing that as a blanket on every type of development. You wouldn't be accepting an application and saying, "Oh, on this applicant, on this SB nine project, we're going to impose parking." It's already been imposed for that whole neighborhood. That would be the way to approach it. And doing it that way, then it's an objective design standard.
But then, thinking this through, it could adversely affect our efforts to promote ADUs, correct?
Correct.
So, currently, a single-family lot is allowed to have an ADU and an JEDU, is that not correct?
Yes.
And so, if that situation existed and it was split, are we saying now that the two subsequent lots can only have two totals, so that third unit in that case needs to be removed, or is not currently legal anymore?
So, again, it's, it's where you're currently allowed three on one lot. You go through the SB nine process, you're allowed to then have two lots, each with two units. So, where you're currently allowed three, if you go through the SB nine process, you would be then allowed to have four units. Two Correct. You'd allow, you'd be allowed to have two units on the left lot and two on the right lot. Previously, they were, the lots were together, and you would only be allowed to have three. Now, you end up with two units and two, or two lots, each with two units.
Good.
That would be difficult to put the parking requirement. I mean, we have, our ADU ordinance and the state law, you know, allow, does not require parking for ADUs within certain distances
Correct.
like transit. So, all those things would continue to apply.
Yes.
That's your parking requirement.
But, but, I mean, this whole thing, to me, has a huge viability foundation question, and I haven't dug into this enough to know, who did the feasibility analysis for this, on what kinds of sites. The parking issue, it's like, if you have units, you have to have some kind of reasonable parking, or it just ripples effects everywhere, i- if this were even going to be done. And you can bet, somebody will say it's viable to put parking on the ground level and just start stacking units above. I mean, it's draconian.
Yeah, but the ADU requirement still applies, where you can only go so high, and the other requirements still apply.
But remember, it's not just ADUs and JEDUs that you can build.
You'd still have the parking requirements for your single-family
Right.
home zoning.
You could
Once you split it, you still have to meet those parking requirements. That's your objective design.
Right. Your objective design standard for parking would come into effect when it, particularly when it's not a JDADU or ADU, when it's a duplex.
Yeah.
But you're, you're absolutely right. The parking issue likely will have vast impact. Who did the feasibility study? There's no CEQA that's required for legislation. The legislature is exempt from CEQA. The legislature creates CEQA and can, can change things at will, but as a threshold level, it simply doesn't apply to their actions.
This is why we really have to start talking to other cities, because more of this is coming our way.
And what is the status of, I guess, the, the conversation regarding historic resources, which is, you know, really critical to South Pasadena? I mean, whether it's precedent or, you know, how, how, what are our options for how we address that? Do we know yet?
Give me three slides.
Oh.
Next slide? There's some limitations that we can put on this. They're very minor, minimal. We can We can require that an applicant sign an affidavit stating their intent to occupy one of those units for at least three years. However, it's the intent to occupy. And intentions change and there's ways to. Exactly. We cannot put a owner occupancy requirement, such as required covenant, recorded covenant, on that. And we cannot set, establish a setback requirement on an existing unit as a condition of approval of a lot split. Meaning, we can't say, well, now that you want to split your lot, you need to be 40 feet back from the curb. Move your existing house. That's not going to feel bad. But other types of setbacks can be there. You just can't impose a new one on that lot.
What if it's already an existing non-conforming condition? Where they don't meet, they don't meet the setback requirement.
Too close to the curb?
Side setback typically.
Yeah, I'm sorry?
Usually there's side setbacks.
Right.
If they were existing non-conforming, would that affect anything?
Probably not. Probably have to grant that. So, next slide. We do not have to approve if it results in demolition of a housing unit which has been subject to an affordability covenant. The unit is rent-controlled or occupied by a tenant in the past three years or is taken out of rental market pursuant to the Ellis Act. Next slide. We also do not need to approve if it will result in the demolition of a unit within a historic district or containing historic property. So this gets to the historic aspect. It does not, however, say that we do not have to approve if it's in a historic district. It's where it's the demolition of a historic structure. We also do not need to approve if it's in an environmentally sensitive area or in a high fire severity zone. The trick with those two are if the environmentally sensitive issue can be mitigated, then the non-approval would not apply. And also if it's in a high fire severity zone, but in order to build there, you could build within the building code to mitigate the high fire severity, then it can't be used. The analysis of this is it makes particularly the high fire severity zone aspect almost worthless. Because it's saying that if you can build under the CBC, then you can build in that zone. Next.
On, on the design guidelines for ADU discussion we had, there was some confusion because the state law said only state-designated historic districts could count. This one doesn't, this one is, does clearly allow local district?
When it's going to result in the demolition of a locally designated property.
And not, not a eligible.
Correct.
It has to be designated.
Right.
Thanks.
No, it could be a duplex attached wall or it could be a primary unit with a JADU inside that. Inside the, JADU is inside the walls of an existing structure. You rearrange an interior wall, it create an exterior access point. Now you have an apartment essentially inside a building, creating a duplex out of a house, essentially. All right? So that's the nickel version of SB nine. SB ten, next slide.
Before you move to the, like all the processing of a lot split that would happen legally, that you still have to go through that. You still have to pay the fee associated with that, all that good stuff.
I don't know about all, what you're saying, all.
Well, I mean, you need to record the split and.
Yes.
You know, usually there's a fee involved.
Yes.
Usually there's a lawyer involved. So all those fun things still have to.
And I think we'd still have the impact fees, the sewer fees, all of those types of things, all of that still.
So another quick question. It was my earlier question about the housing element. Can we use this as a weapon in our housing element? Identify sites that could be split into 1,200 square foot units, square foot parcels? And say, you know, there can be two on each of these 1,200 square feet things. And that's the way we're going to meet our RENA numbers.
The thing about the, the meeting of the RENA numbers is that you have to show the viability of it.
Right.
And not only that it could be done, but it likely would be done.
Well, there, I mean, they wouldn't have passed this if they didn't think it was likely to be done. So my mind would be every single residential property gets, you know, you split it into two and you, that's, that's your RENA number. I mean, if they're going to require these things, why not?
The problem is that the city would have to enact an ordinance and the residents that inhabit those properties would raise holy hell.
Okay, so that's my question about SB nine and SB ten. Is SB nine automatic? Because I think SB ten is, we have to adopt an ordinance.
That's correct. SB nine is, is in effect right now, well, would become in effect on January 1.
So we don't have to do anything, it's law.
Exactly.
Yeah.
To create, what's that?
Yes and no, but I'll get to that in my comments.
It will mean that with a single-family lot, if you follow the.
Yeah, I get it, I get everything.
You get the split, you get two lots on there. You get two lots and two units on each lot, up to two on each lot. Correct. And so if the idea is to use that as the weapon to then solve the RENA question, the biggest issue with, with the housing element is not coming up with units that can be built. It's coming up with affordable units that can be built. And so if we're going to take a lot that's currently worth, I don't know, let's say a million dollars, and split it in half and then say on that, we're going to build two more structures, the valuation might not pencil out so that it becomes an affordable unit. And so it's those types of things that we would have to then show that by saying, you know, all 10,000 lots, well, it's not 10,000 lots that would qualify, but something like maybe 8,000 lots in South Pasadena that would qualify for something like this. And so that really then becomes 16,000 lots. And therefore, we would have 32,000 units available. You know.
Because property value is property value. I mean, it just depends on the square footage, right? So I don't, I'm just throwing it out there that if the absurdity of all of this, it's kind of, can we use some of the absurdity to our benefit with the other absurdity? That's just my point. I mean, at some point, this makes no sense.
So the, as with the ADU numbers, there, in the housing element, there is a small number applied for these. I don't have that back up the top, but we discussed it in a meeting recently. It's a small number, and I believe Amy had that number. It's a, it's a small number that would be addressed through the SB nine along the same analysis as the ADU factors.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt. Can I ask a question? So SB nine, the intention is to increase ownership?
It's to increase units. But it allows for a, another ownership where currently there's not. Through the ADU, I guess there is a way in the ADU, JD, particularly the ADU, to have ownership. But it, under normal property law, it becomes extremely infeasible.
I think it's hard because I thought it required, it was saying that utility and tie-in meters, there's not to be two. So that would be a little bit hard to navigate.
That's just it. It becomes very difficult.
It's intended as rental.
It becomes very difficult under, you know, 150 years of California property law to then go about thinking of the shed in my backyard or my garage is now going to be sold to somebody else, but the land under it isn't and the access. It just becomes very difficult to conceptually and get a bank loan on that, so on and so forth. This SB nine becomes very easy to apply to what everyone knows is you can buy a lot and everything on top of it.
I guess, or the counter to that is people just have the ability to do more on their parcel and become wealthier. And nobody is better off for it. I mean, except for the individual property owner who decides to max out their lot, having huge effect on the parcels around it in a neighborhood that's cohesive. I mean, it doesn't take, you know, rockets, isn't rocket science and the horrible implications it could have. I mean, again, it's like if you just in isolation say, we need more units. Okay, there's one idea. Just keep dividing it up and dividing it up and adding more and making smaller. And, but it doesn't seem like it's really thoughtful in terms of truly ownership, quality, value growth, community. I mean, it's just, it's, you know.
You didn't write though.
No, 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 I'm sorry, I'm looking at Andrew Jarrett. But we're all, we're all talking to each other, right? It's like, it is, it's like policy, people versus planners, social, cultural experts, whatever, historians. You know, it's like just all of the facets that require healthy communities over time and ownership for all and diversity. But that doesn't, that's not even really taken into account in any way. This is, it's, it's so myopic and just has truly, truly scary consequences. And I would say that the majority, if not the vast majority of our parcels are not set up with the location of the house and such to just divide them into two, you know. Are we, do we, are we required to accept any kind of weird gerrymandering of the lots in order to split them with, you know, flag lots or shared driveways or, it's done, without demolishing more than 25% of the house? I don't see how most of our lots can be divided.
If your question is, are you going to be required to, is the city going to be required to accept a very creative approach that very creative architects apply? Yeah. But I, I think you're, I think you've hit it on the head that this is not going to be a solution to change every lot in the city into two lots. There are current physical constraints that will prevent that from happening.
You still have the possibility, buildings.
Correct.
Still has limitations.
I mean, just like with, there's dozens, not hundreds of lots in the city and others that are currently legal lots that still can't be built on because of geologic building code and just physical constraints, even to put one unit on. So I, I think we need to, you know, keep that in mind, too. I'm not defending this law by any means. I completely agree with Commissioner Padilla's critique of this hasn't been thought out. But I don't think that there, that Sacramento's approach here was, this is going to be something that can be done for every lot. I think their approach was something along the lines of, we've got a crisis, what can we do? Well, we can eliminate that impediment development that often comes through the subdivision map act. We'll make it allowed by right. And that's what I think what they were solving for was getting rid of impediment development, of going through a discretionary process and a lengthy subdivision process.
Not surprising, anything coming down by state statute is going to be a pretty blunt instrument. I think the 25% sort of mitigates some of it, but also just for information, I've seen a number of cities sort of evaluate the feasibility of this within their own cities, both physically as well as financially. And, and it's been a, it only works in very, very limited set of conditions. So in fact, you know, a number of cities were considering, this has been a discussion, it's like whether it could be city policy. And a lot of cities have moved away from that primarily because it doesn't apply, you know, and you won't see the intended results. And you'll see that in a very narrow set of, you know, location. So I think it may, I mean, I don't know what it's going to produce, but it's, you know, I'm more worried about what else is coming down the line, as you're saying, because this is, this is blunt and it only sort of does not like dramatically change, you know, development activity here.
Right?
SB ten.
SB ten. SB ten is a little different. This is a, an ability, this will require the city to affirmatively act to adopt this. And it's essentially a CEQA exemption or to allow parcels of up to 10 units as urban infill or in transit-rich areas without having to go through the CEQA process. An urban infill site is within an urbanized area is defined by the US Census Bureau. South Pasadena, the entirety of it is, is such. Where 75% of the perimeter of that site adjoins parcels developed for urban use. So in, that essentially means if you have vacant land next to you on two sides, you would not be an urban infill site. If you only had vacant land next to you on one site, one side, however, that still would be an urban infill site. And if that site is zoned for residential or mixed use. Next. A transit-rich area is any lot within one-half mile of a major transit stop or a parcel on a high-quality bus corridor. Haven't done the, the map for South Pasadena, but I think that pretty well covers the entire city.
Yeah, we looked at it before.
Yeah. Next. This does not apply to a site with a very high-fire hazard severity zone. But again, this is where it kicks in that if a project would comply with existing building standards, it limits the applicability of this exemption in the fire, high-fire severity zone. Next. And so as to both SB nine and SB ten, staff has incorporated a portion in the housing element of SB nine. You should ensure a ministerial review process is addressed in, under SB nine is addressed through city policy. That both of these laws take effect January 1. So there still is some additional time to analyze the impact of this and clarify whether existing zonings or additional zoning standards, objective standards, need to be imposed and to what extent the current objective zoning standards either need to be changed or clarified so that we understand how this will all apply. And clarifying that, making sure everyone knows SB ten is optional. We are not being forced to accept without environmental impact. knows SB ten is optional, we are not being forced to accept without environmental impact analysis what a ten-unit development would do. And so that's the important part, the distinction. And so the, the criticism that Mr. Padilla was saying about where's the analysis for parking be done on a project-by-project basis, you don't get that under SB nine. You don't get it under SB ten if you adopt that either. But if you want to, as a city, have policy that allows, is very pro-housing, allows for projects to come in in certain areas to be a, an SB ten locality, maybe a couple blocks or an overlay zone, you can apply it in that way and acknowledge that the environmental impacts when processing that are not going to be evaluated on a project-by-project basis, well then this is a vehicle to do it. No pun intended there. All right, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions or comments from the commission? Take public comment? Do we have any public comment?
Yes, Mr. Chair, we have a few hands raised in Zoom. Sean, can you unmute yourself?
Yes, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Hi, I apologize. I just had a quick question. I know that we gave public comment regarding the housing element update. I just wanted to see if it was still going to be open for public comment at a later time, or if this was going to be the only meeting that was going to be held.
Well, you can submit written comments, and there will be other opportunities to comment on this as it moves through the process. So there'll be several more public meetings on it.
Okay, perfect. Thank you very much. You guys enjoy your night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So Ellen, if you could unmute yourself, please.
Great. Thank you, Commissioners. Andrew, I'm going to take, ask you to take some quick notes here. I've got six things to jump through. One is, there's a real-world example of the split lots right now, and that's in Manhattan Beach. They began doing this maybe fifteen years ago, and it hasn't destroyed the character of their neighborhoods. So the planning commission might want to see what happened down there and see how it might apply to us. Andrew, if the lots are split, is that split going to be recorded with the county recorder? And would the homeowner be able to sell the second lot? Three, while I hear everybody's concerns, this does create an opportunity for some of our house-rich, cash-poor seniors and for parents to create housing to enable their children to return. Andrew, again, for you, once a lot has been split, can the lots be split again if they still meet that minimum size requirement? Just by way of example, I know the mayor lives on a very large lot. So if she was to divide that, she would still have two very large lots. Is either of those splittable again, or is it a one-time deal? Or if it is splittable, is there a interval between the first split and the second split? Comment, I think Janet made this, but the suggestion to incorporate SB nine or SB ten into our RENA numbers was an excellent one, and I think we do need to do that. And the last thing is, we know that water is a long-term problem statewide, and through a number of these planning sessions in the last year and a half, myself and a number of other people have kept on asking, where's the water going to come from? Andrew, you seem to indicate that there might be some.
Thirty seconds.
Andrew, you indicated there might be a couple of circumstances where the city could not go through the administrative process. So in regards to water, could you expand on that? Thank you.
Is there any?
Okay. Was someone going to respond to his question, or?
Well, in general, it's public comment. It's not public.
Okay.
But some of the questions were pretty good, so I figure let's go through them. Let's go through all the comments.
Okay. Okay, so Josh, please unmute.
Can you guys hear me? Wait, I'm using my iPad and it normally doesn't work.
We're getting some feedback.
Sorry about that. My iPad normally doesn't work, so I don't turn my phone on. That was a great presentation, City Attorney. I agree with everything you said. Quiet Spartacus. You, you guys should, I believe, one of the presentations you should receive should be on Senate Bill four seventy-eight. It was just passed at the same time SB nine and ten was passed, implemented January first. It requires a minimum of FAR of one point zero for zones three to seven units and one point two five zones eight to ten units. That incorporates all of your RS and RM zones in South Pasadena, which currently have FARs of zero point three five and zero point five zero. So that's a change that you guys have to make, you know, I, I don't know when you have to make it, but it's implementable on January first, that you guys have to completely change your FARs for your missing-middle zoning, and that is Senate Bill four seventy-eight. That's all. Great presentation, City Attorney, Jarrett.
Is there anyone else who is watching via Zoom that would like to speak? Please raise your hand. We have no more speakers.
Thank you. I was curious about the multiple lot split, and I've been talking about water for a while, if there's any.
I'll take them in that reverse order. The water question, I, I don't see anything in SB nine that directly addresses that. I could look again.
But so there are, there are, so sorry, but there are municipalities that do have objective water requirements, so you can only put so many things, toilets, so on and so forth on an individual parcel.
Not only that, there are other state laws that, like the Urban Water Management Plan, that every city is required to adopt, and we just within the last week or two approved South Pasadena's here. So that establishes that there is a capacity for a certain amount of units. And so I, I think that the speaker was, is on to something, that eventually water will become the, the absolute constraint to development in the state. But I, I don't believe that that is the situation that this city is in at this time. As far as the lot split and recordation, yes, this creates a legal lot, just the way a legal lot is created through the subdivision map act. And it's just an alternate way of creating a legal lot. And that legal lot can be sold and loaned upon and developed just the way any other lot can. As for whether or not it can be divided and subdivided over and over and over again, no, SB nine is expressed in that, that it only is able to be used on a lot where SB nine has not been used on that lot previously. If you want to subdivide a lot under SB nine, and then with those two lots, subdivide one of those again, I suppose the, you would be allowed to do so under subdivision map act. But I think the way it would apply is you would have to have a pretty big, single lot to start with, to then carve it into something roughly equal-sized, to then subdivide it under the subdivision map act further. So I don't know that it's practical. I'm sure it's going to be done, and I'm sure someone will do it even in this town at some point. But the, the, the way that this SB nine was designed, it has currently in there, who knows, they could change it in the future. But currently in there, it's expressed that you cannot use SB nine on a lot that SB nine has already been used on for a lot split.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Any further? Great. So we will move on to the administrative portion of our meeting and have comments from our council liaison, Mayor Moon.
Okay, I've got quite a bit to say, so hang on. Commissioner Dahl, thank you for highlighting the eighty-four percent impairment attributed to water and diesel particulate. I have no clue where that number comes from. I think it is wildly inaccurate unless, two years ago, the cities, the city derives, the city pumps most of its water from wells that are located in the city of San Gabriel, because we are on, if you will, the edge of the bowl of the main San Gabriel base and the main San, and the city of San Gabriel, where the city's wells are, is in a much deeper portion of the aquifer. So it made physical economic sense for the city to locate its wells there. It actually has to pump the water uphill to South Pasadena. And unfortunately, several years ago, the State Water Resources Control Board, for the first time, enacted a water quality standard for which it gave no grace period before, it, it was meaningless grace period, it was just ninety days before that standard became effective. And that caused the city to have to purchase water from MWD in order to avoid having to report that it was providing water that did not meet state water quality standards. In the meantime, we, we have addressed the issue. We did so on a very expedited basis, but as a result of that, we have granulated activated, granular activated charcoal, which is the methodology of choice to address almost all water contaminants. And with the recent completion of the Graves Reservoir, which previously was inoperable because not only was the physical plant itself not structurally sound, but we needed water quality treatment there. We also have installed GAC at Graves, and those are the two locations where the city has wells. And so the only other factor could be diesel particulate. But I definitely will be working with staff to find out where that number came from, because I, it, it's incorrect. Also, just by the by, my recollection is that we have no businesses in town that are subject to NPDES permits. This is something that I had to determine because we would otherwise consider the imposition of a permit inspection fee, because now that the, the Regional Water Quality Board has delegated to cities the responsibility to enforce business NPDES permit compliance, but I don't believe we have any in the city of South Pasadena. So the only other potential contamination would be from construction. And obviously, that's something we're concerned with, and so the construction projects have to, have to obtain stormwater pollut, they have to develop a stormwater pollution plan that is approved by the city, but beyond that, there shouldn't be any potential water quality contamination within the city, other than, I'm not sure of the extent, I don't think we have lead pipes, but that's one thing that we would need to verify. And that's the only thing that I can think of. It's true that we have a lot of initiatives that are ongoing, and frankly, at this point, it's really hard to engage our residents because we've had so many. Just tomorrow night, the city council will be meeting in a special meeting to consider our capital improvement program. We have started the strategic plan. We're going to have, the CIP is going to be rolled up into the strategic plan. We also had a special meeting whereby the city was educated on the potential uses for the American Rescue Plan Act. And so all of this is going to roll out into additional public engagement. We also have redistricting within the city going on. The school district is launching for the first time, redistricting. So there are, in addition to the outreach for the general plan and the downtown specific plan, so fatigue, citizen fatigue is a real concern. And I think the idea of going out into PTA or, or our farmer's market is great. The only thing is, I don't know if you know this, but about fifty percent of the participants in farmer's market are not from South Pasadena, which is good, that it's so popular, but still, it's, it's a real challenge. With regard to the challenge, as Commissioner Braun suggested, of the RENA numbers, you heard our city attorney reference the litigation that's been initiated by the Orange County Council of Governments. And one thing that I might suggest is that perhaps at a next meeting, that the city attorney be asked to provide just a, a litigation status update. I think that would be helpful. However, note, to the best of my knowledge, I think one other of the eighty-plus cities in all of LA County has joined that litigation. And I believe there's tremendous apprehension because of the potential for adverse consequences from HCD. I can tell you, I am a member of the League of California Cities LA County Division Board of Directors. I represent the Aurora Vodugo Cities there. I'm also a member of the Contract Cities Legislative Committee, and I'm a member of the statewide League Environmental Quality Committee. And I can tell you, electeds up and down the state were up in arms. They were extremely concerned regarding all of the housing bills. And SB nine and ten are just the tip of the iceberg as, as our resident Josh Albrechtson said, there's another one, EB two fifteen, which expands to private parties, the ability to sue cities for noncompliance with their housing element. It also allows the Attorney General to designate third parties to sue cities for lack of compliance with their housing element. So when, after SB nine and ten had been approved by the legislature, there was concerted effort on behalf of contract cities, the statewide League of California Cities. There are over four hundred cities in the state, and I believe, and I forget exactly the number, but it's at least one hundred and fifty, and it may be north of two hundred, cities specifically sent letters to the governor, asking him to veto SB nine in particular. SB ten, because it's elective, it's really an enabling statute, got less attention. And obviously, that bill was signed anyway. And it's because we are in a housing crisis, there's all the homeless, there is a real concern, the legislature desperately, in my opinion, wants to be perceived as doing something. But in, again, in my opinion, the real crisis is an affordability crisis. And sadly, none of these bills do anything to directly address affordability. And sadly, none of these bills do anything to directly address affordability. I will say that the legislature did, and their budget bill did provide finally some funding for affordable housing, but the magnitude is so small relative to the need. But that's really where the crisis lies. I mentioned, I think at our last meeting, that I was appointed to a statewide working group consisting of about 24 electeds selected from throughout the state. We are reviewing proposed constitutional amendment ACA 7 that was introduced by Assembly Member Marat Suci from the South Bay. And some of the same folks that were among those electeds that argued most strenuously against SB nine have filed an initiative. It has gone, it has been reviewed by the state Attorney General. And the state Attorney General has provided a fiscal analysis, not really a legal analysis. And the initiative, as of last Monday, I think, was authorized to begin collecting signatures. And it's anticipated that in order to allow for invalid signatures, that essentially a million signatures would have to be collected. So I'm on the group that is reviewing ACA 7 and this initiative. Unfortunately, the problem with the initiative is that, in my opinion, the proponents were overzealous. And then there's zeal to try to restore local control. The initiative has some prefatory language that states essentially something to the effect of, this is the purpose of the initiative. And among other things, recognizing that ACA 7 was overbroad. It specifically evidenced an intent to nevertheless have cities comply with CEQA and with state for housing and employment laws. Unfortunately, the operative language in the initiative, which is the text that actually amends the Constitution, specifically indicates an exemption from the otherwise broad local control that would be restored to cities for land use. It specifically exempts, for example, the Coastal Act. It does not specifically exempt CEQA, which in my mind raises a huge ambiguity. And obviously, there were very well-moneyed proponents that lobbied for SB nine and 10. And I am fairly certain, and I had my husband look at this, who's had 40-plus years of municipal law practice, and he thinks that it is, that it's unduly vague and that there is, I think, not only a high probability of litigation, but I'm very concerned that a high probability of successful litigation. And personally speaking, I'm very concerned that if cities do something, that we need to do it in a very thoughtful and deliberate manner. And I'm very concerned that if this initiative were to have sufficient signatures and it failed, once it was challenged in litigation, that that could make it more difficult for cities to try again. Not to mention the fact that where would the money come from to support it? And how many people are going to allocate their own money for this? With regard to the comment on skilled labor force, I read the letter and went to the reference, the materials that are referenced there. The city of Hayward is applying that, but only to projects with a minimum of 30,000 square feet, which is a very high bar. And I don't know of any other city, at least the proponents have not identified any other city beyond Hayward that is doing that. With regard to SB nine, the cost of land is so high in our city that I agree with the city attorney, I think, on a practical basis. It is not likely to have much effect. I do know, down the street in my neighborhood, there's one parcel where the home is set way back at the rear of the property. And there's several of those in town. They're not common, but there are some of those. And with regard to properties such as that, then yes, I think there is a logical viability for the application of SB nine. It does, we, I did check the statute while the presentation was being provided. And we can, the city does retain the ability to designate a local historic district. And that is something that I think we do need to look at, particularly for the western side of the city, where the parcels are smaller and they may, because they're smaller, would be less costly to acquire. And my concern is that there's greater potential for SB nine to be applied there. And I think much of the western area of the city would in fact qualify for a historic district. And I have spoken to the Chair of the South Pass Preservation Foundation, as I recall, on more than one occasion, to remind him, hey, when is the cultural, and he's still on the Cultural Heritage Commission, when is the Cultural Heritage Commission going to look at this? Because I think if we don't do something, it's a missed opportunity. And that's where I see the greatest vulnerability of the, for the application of SB nine in our city. Also, no, under SB nine, no parking is required within a half mile of a high-quality transit corridor. Frankly, I think the potential for an adverse outcome in terms of changing cities and neighborhoods' quality of life is far more dire in what I will call working-class, single-family residential areas like southeast cities, like south-central LA, where you have, the properties are going to be cheaper. And I think there's a greater threat to adversely affecting the property values of those homeowners that do not elect to engage in a lot split. Finally, on water and the supply of water. I don't anticipate water as actually going to be that big of an issue. I'm far more concerned with regard to the state of the infrastructure, which our infrastructure is really, really old. As you can tell, we've had multiple water main breaks in town. And that's very much a concern. Statewide, 80% of water in the state is used between the combination of ag and for environmental uses. The rest, 20% is urban. Of the 20%, now way back when, when I was at MWD, at that time, 70% of the urban use was for outside irrigation. I have to believe that at this point, with the, at this point, over 10 years of incentives to replace your turf with water-wise, that that figure is less. But still, there's a very significant difference. And my recollection is probably at least 50 gallons per day between the indoor use and outdoor use. 50 gallons, there's new water conservation standards that were enacted by the legislature, I think, year before last, and I believe we're supposed to get to a 55 gallon per day within the near term for indoor use. So I'm not so concerned. Also, just today, I attended a meeting of the San Gabriel Valley Cog Water Policy Committee, and it is the MWD, in cooperation with the LA County Sanitation District, is operating a pilot project where they're taking some of the effluent from the sand district's primary facility in Carson. And so far, the operation of the pilot project is going well. And it's anticipated that eventually, the parties will agree to build a plant that would purify the water through reverse osmosis, that in the initial phase of the project, that a pipeline would be constructed to the San Gabriel Valley, so that there would be, the water would be transported to a spreading ground, and it would infiltrate through the aquifer. In addition, just as a reminder, pursuant to the terms of our MS4 permit, all of the cities in the county are required to capture their stormwater and infiltrate it and not allow it to flow out to the ocean. So while we are looking at water reliability challenges because of the loss of snowpack in the Sierra, which has provided substantial storage for us, and certainly we're looking at more volatility in precipitation with climate change, there are measures that are being undertaken now in anticipation of that. And that concludes my remarks.
Thank you. Comments from planning commissioners? Why don't we start with Commissioner Braun?
I just, I just think it's time, I know the planning has done so, we've had so much staff turnover, and we're so happy to have Angelica and Margaret and everyone. But I think we really have to start thinking more strategically about how we're going to move forward. And there's just so much to do. So I'm not exactly sure even how we're going to do that. But we've been reactive, just because we've had to be. So that's just my only comment, is got to figure out a way to get a little strategic.
Mr. Chair?
No comment.
Mr. Herr Dahl?
No comments.
Mr. Burke?
No additional comment.
I had two things. I want to make sure that we don't lose track of them. So one is, we really do need to take a real look at the requirements to remediate the natural slope and vegetation. And I'd like to kind of get that on the agenda for at least the first quarter of next year. I don't want it to interfere with the kind of critical path thing, but I do think it's something that we should take a look at and as necessary recommend changes. And the same is for that, you had the project with the nano brewery application. And just, we said we would take a look at the definition of that at some point in the future. So I don't want to lose track of those things. So those were my comments. So that's that.
Good evening, Chair, planning commissioners. First, I want to thank you for tonight, for the discussion. I thought it went really well. And really, it's because of you and taking the time and really participating in this process. We really do appreciate it and appreciate your comments. I do want to remind the public that there is still plenty of time to submit their comments. And they can, comments, written comments can be submitted to housingelement@southpasadenaca.gov. And we are accepting comments through December 6th. On the 17th of November, we will also be having a similar presentation and discussion with the city council. It's also an opportunity for the public to participate, to come. We continue with hybrid meetings, so either come in person or online. And so again, for those that are just learning about the housing element, there are plenty of opportunities to get involved and to participate. Tonight, there was, throughout the evening, there was quite a few comments about our staffing levels. And I did want to let the planning commission know that actually, as of today, we do have offers out to a planning manager and three associate planners. So I am very optimistic about getting people on board and really bringing us up to speed and getting to that backlog that we know exists. The good news is that, once we have staff on board and we're able to address, you know, the backlog, then it really provides us the opportunity to do more and to do some of what we talk about. I do want to recognize Commissioner Braun's comments about, you know, there's a lot to do, and there is. We will, you know, I have been taking copious notes tonight. But really, you know, it's, thank you for your patience. It really is a staffing issue. And I think that's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So with that, I, it is 9:57. I'll adjourn this planning commission meeting of November 9th, 2021, to our special planning commission meeting, which is scheduled for November 15th. Thank you, everyone.